For us, before we start, let's have a moment of silence and before we do that, let's remember the esteemed Mayor Varney who passed away this past week, three-term mayor who, so we want to remember his family and those that are affected by this. So at this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Well, Councilwoman Brent, if she would lead us in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to Georgetown's City Council meeting for Monday, February 24th, 2025. At this time, we have roll call.
Here.
Mrs. Hamburg?
Present.
Mr. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. Minkie?
Present.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle Sames?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mayor, before we proceed, if I could, have a motion to walk on?
The motion's been made. Do I have a second? Second made by...
Sorry, the full motion hasn't been made.
Oh, okay.
I move to introduce a resolution honoring the many accomplishments and legacy of Mayor Everett Varney.
All right. Now, second, Ms. Mitchell, do I have, excuse me, motion made, do I have a second?
Tammy was just...
Tammy, sorry. Okay, been a long day. All right, so we have a motion made, properly second. Are there any comments at this time? Before I read the, before I read the resolution now, at this time, I would like that any of you all would like to say something. For some of you all who work with Mr. Varney, I'll go first. I know Mr. Varney for a long, long time, thirty, forty-plus years. And I'm gonna tell you what, he was a man of his word. And he really, truly was what we called the people's mayor. Because he put people first in everything he did. And like I said, there was a, there was a good side of him, there was also a sneaky side of him sometimes when I dealt with him. But, but said to the left, I loved him very much. And he taught me a lot about things or how to deal with people. And that, you know, the thing he always said, that be true to your word. If nothing else, do what you say you gotta do and leave it there. So at this time, I would like, if any of you council member would like to say anything in response to that? Ms. Mitchell?
I've known the Varney family and Mr. and Mrs. Varney for all of my life. And I just want to say thank you to you all. And thank you to your father for all he did, your father, your husband. They, he leaves a great legacy. And to your family and to the city and the county. And we thank you for that.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I had the pleasure of working with Mayor Varney from the business side of the, of the perspective. And we'll greatly miss him and his leadership here in this community. So my condolences to the family.
Ms. Ed?
To the Varney family, as everyone knows, Mr. Varney and I were, a lot of times, we were on the opposite side of fence with things and kind of fought some hard battles with each other. But you always knew that he had the best interests of the community at heart. And I would tease him about that. Don't you like our battles? Don't you like that? And boy, would he come back with me so quick and say, no, I don't. And, but then every time he would say something like that, then he was quick to forgive, quick to let it go, quick to move on to the next place. And most of the time, his quick wit would break up the room every time he would say something. He could come back so fast with such a quick wit on things, that all the tension just eased out of everything. But I had put something online about going into his office, because we spent a lot of time together in the office as mayor when, when he was mayor. And then he even came into the office as I was leaving as mayor, and he was taking it back over again. And some of the conversations we had, which I won't share, because they were very personal, but they were deeply the man that who he was. And I appreciate him for that. And actually, when we were no longer the adversaries of jockeying for the same position and those types of things, he was the kindest, gentlest, most warming man, always had a smile to greet me with, and a hug most of the time. And I always felt welcomed by him. And Mrs. Varney, you as well. And thank you for those wonderful memories of Mr. Varney. I sure appreciate it.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Hampton.
Thanks, Mayor. I had the privilege of having Mr. Varney as a business law teacher at Scott County. And he coached my, one of my older brothers in basketball for three or four years. And I'm also indebted to Mr. Varney. He, he got me involved in, in the community. He appointed me to my first ever term on Board of Adjustments, Georgetown Board of Adjustments. And, you know, I stayed involved ever since then. So he set me on a path to where I am now. So I'm ever indebted to him. And I just pass all my condolences to each and every one of you. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
I didn't know Mr. Varney well, but when I first moved to town after marrying my husband, I worked at the Dairy Queen and my husband worked at the swimming pool as a lifeguard. And Mr. Varney, at that time, was the manager of the swimming pool. And so he was one of the first adults that I met when I first moved to town. And he had the friendliest smile and the most welcoming personality, and just was very engaging, and even took me on a tour of his home, which I thought, wow, to be that hospitable. And he was a champion for the youth. And what a legacy that he's left. So condolences to the family.
Yep.
Yep. Not only did Mr. Varney leave an amazing legacy, I was privileged to know him, like many of the folks here in this room, but I think also that his probably his true legacy is here in the room. Amazing family, amazing children. We're blessed to count you guys as members of the community. Our hearts go out to you. And, and if there's anything you need, let us know.
Right. Anyone else? All right. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you read the resolution, please.
Resolution of the City of Georgetown honoring Everett Varney, former mayor of Georgetown. Whereas the Georgetown City Council was greatly saddened to learn of the passing of former Mayor Everett Mutt Varney, and whereas former Mayor Varney served three terms as Georgetown mayor, two consecutive terms from 1999 to 2006, and a third term from 2011 to 2014. And whereas during this tenure, former Mayor Varney was able to accomplish in whole or across terms with his peers, mayors, many improved in whole or across terms with his peers, mayors, many improvements for the city of Georgetown, including the reform and rejuvenation of Georgetown's Police Department, the construction of new police station on Bourbon Street, the expansion of public parking behind City Hall, the establishment of the backups program that allows law enforcement agencies to administer service across jurisdictional boundaries, the improvement of local code enforcement board processes, the growth of lanes run business park, and the ban on smoking in city restaurants, where Mayor Varney cast a rare tie-breaking vote on the then controversial issue. And whereas in addition to his service as an elected official, former Mayor Varney spent nearly three decades educating and coaching the youth of Scott County. First hired as a civics and a business law teacher at Scott County High School in 1972, former Mayor Varney went on to teach a number of subjects, serve as assistant principal at Scott County High School, and principal of the Scott County Ninth Grade School, and led the Scott County High School Boys Basketball Team as its head coach for seventeen years, where his teams won twelve district championships and two regional championships. And whereas based on his time in coaching and his accomplishments prior to coming to the Georgetown community, former Mayor Varney is a member of the Kentucky Association of Basketball Coaches' Court of Honor, the Belfry High School Hall of Fame, and the Berea College Hall of Fame. And whereas those who knew former Mayor Varney consistently recall his legacy and recount their memories of a man with quick, wry wit, a steadfast and caring smile, a compassionate heart, and a staunch dedication to both the tradition and progress of the Georgetown-Scott County community. And whereas the Georgetown City Council wishes to thank former Mayor Varney for his dedicated service and leadership to the city of Georgetown. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Georgetown that the Georgetown City Council honors the memory and commends the legacy of former Mayor Everett Varney as an elected official, as a public educator, and as a pillar of our community, and expresses its condolences to the Varney family on his passing. This resolution was approved by the vote of the city council, City of Georgetown, the 24th day of February 2025.
Also, again, thank the family for being here. You know, you're, you're dear to my heart, you know, and that, yeah, we need to vote. We need to vote. But I just want to say that, but you're dear to my heart. But next thing we need to do, we need to vote on this. So at this time, it was, motion was made properly second. Are there any other questions and or comment? All those in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. Thank you all. Next, the approval minutes. I need a motion for the approval of minutes.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Mr. Stone.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hampton. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise. Item four, the receipt of the check registry. If you have received it, council just signify by raising your hand that you received it. Right? Let the record reflect that it was received. Public comments. At this time, you have four minutes to come. Please state your name for the record. And also, Madam Clerk will be to timer. At three minutes, she will let you know that three minutes has passed. And then when your four minutes is up, she will tell you that four minutes is up. We're asking you at that time, if you will please, at that time, finish your statement, whatever, and then take your seat so we can be respectful of, of everybody else who wants to come and speak before this council. At this time, we might have Mr. Harold Dean Jesse, and he wants to talk about downtown.
Make sure your four minutes is accurate, please.
Yes, sir.
Takes me longer than that to say my name. But thank you for letting the public speak tonight. I just want to come to you as not only a citizen, a person that lives Georgetown, a business owner. Stephen and I own Fava's 1910 Diner, where I also own the property. And Fava's is one of the oldest businesses in Georgetown continuously for 115 years. It is the fifth oldest restaurant in Lexington, Georgetown, not Lexington. And we choose to stay in downtown Georgetown. We can also choose not to stay in downtown Georgetown. And the reason why we choose to stay in Georgetown is because this is what Steve and I specialized in for the last 25 years in downtown Georgetown. We've taken the oldest of the worst of the buildings, which Fava's wasn't the worst of the buildings we've ever done, but definitely was needing some help. And that's what we take pride in. I was taught by Ed and Bevins in the time I was six years old, that Georgetown has a great history, and we are obligated to try to keep that history. So that's what Stephen and I have spent our money on. Now we don't put our money in our pocket. Every dime we make, we put it back in Georgetown. Now, we are blessed that we made our money in other ways. So we can spend the kind of money that these old buildings need. If any of y'all own an old building, I know some of you own property, you don't do it for the money, because it's always going to be thirty to fifty percent more than what you think it's going to cost. We also employ nineteen people. And when the streets are closed and business is bad, and sometimes business is good when the streets are closed, but it's a good seventy-five bad for us, seventy-five percent of the time. And also, when the weather like it is, when you have no business, our employees still get paid. We don't lay people off. We don't cut them in half. We don't let them go. We keep paying them. And that's what we do. That's why local business is so important. When we get a local license to do business in Georgetown, I don't come to you all and ask for tax rebates, cuts on this, cuts on that. We just do our business. And we also give greatly to the nonprofits in this town. There's several of them here. And there's an urban saying, is, do you have your receipts? I have our receipts. And I can name off all of those, but we don't get, we don't say things publicly like that. But anytime you all want to look at those receipts, I'll gladly show you. And how are we able to do that? It's from the generosity of our customers. That's how we're able to help all these nonprofits. And we actually, our employees, every one of them lives in Georgetown. So it's, it's a lot of multiplying. Those of you who understand the economy of local businesses, it's the best business that you have. Those nineteen people plus us, that money turns unbelievable. And we have a really good business. And I just encourage you not to do things that hurts our business. I'm not asking you for any favors. I'm just asking you, think really hard when you do close the streets. We understand the civic reasons why you close the streets. Thank you. And that, that's perfectly fine. We're not talking about that. I'm talking about all the other times we've closed the streets. And I want you to leave this meeting knowing without a doubt, if you want to maintain decades of work that's went on, on this Main Street, to have the family-friendly place, stop closing the streets as much. But we're not against the civic ones. We're against the other ones. When you close the streets four times in one month, that's too much. And the other thing, too, is you're inconvenienced to not just the businesses, but also the people that live here. Everyone likes to beat their chest how big Georgetown is. When you close these streets, this is a state road. You're inconveniencing the people that live here. You're even convenience to people that are passing through here, and it's too much. Just think about that. Think about the inconvenience for the people that live here. And I will close with this. We are having to deal with limited parking and closing of the lots. So think about what that is. And if you want to have a street full of adult businesses, so be it. That's what you'll have. Thank you.
All right. All right, Mr. Price, you have four minutes. Go ahead, sir.
He wants to talk about Great Crossings. Thank you, Mayor Jenkins. I'm Steve Price. I was here two weeks ago. My final words, and I only had four minutes, I've only got four minutes tonight. My final words, when I left last, two weeks ago, Monday, two weeks ago tonight, were please consider asking the Kentucky Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Kentucky Division of Water to reconsider their plan to demolish the dam at Great Crossing. That was my final word as my four minutes ran out. I walked away with those words to you. And I'm here to, I wish I'd, could have gotten on the agenda, but I just didn't have time. But in the four minutes I have tonight, I'm going to continue that message. And I've got here for you phone numbers for the man who's, who's, if you looked at the Georgetown News Graphic a couple of weeks ago, there was a, a news story in the upper-left-hand column, said that the dam will be demolished late summer of 2025. That's what the Georgetown News Graphic said on the front page, in the headline. But if you read down into the first paragraph, it says the dam is planned for tend, tentatively, tentatively for demolition. It's not a done deal. It's not, it's not decided. It is being considered. It is, it is considered tentatively, tentatively for demolition. So you have the option to say to Kevin Rexro at the Kentucky Division of, the Kentucky Department of Fish and Wildlife, his phone number is 502-564-3400. You have the option to ask him, to call him, and ask him to consider feasibility of restoring a grist mill at the dam. And if that is feasible, then the last thing anybody wants to do is demolish the dam. And I'll give you another number for David Coe at the Kentucky Division of Water. His phone number is 502-782-7125. These are the two men who had the operation that, that, that intends to demolish that dam. And I want to read to you from Ann Bevins. Here's Ann Bevins' book about Scott County. You're probably acquainted with it. This is her book. Everybody probably knows her book on Scott County. Ann Bevins, Lindsay Apple, and a man named Johnston. She says on page 48, before 1800, Scott County, the Scott County Court had issued twenty-five permits for mill dams in Scott County. Every farmer who grew corn and small grains, small grains being wheat, oats, rye, barley, and buckwheat, was grinding it to feed his family and, and for, and feed for his animals. And she goes on to say here in another, on another page, see if I can find it here. Grist mills proliferated in the county during the pre-1820 period, producing flour, meal, and animal feeds. Mills could be found every few miles along both North and South Elkhorn, and a few sites on Eagle Creek. The, the early horse-powered mills had been replaced by more efficient water-powered mills. Those, that same efficiency can save us from climate warming. I've got here a, a report published by the International Chamber of Commerce, which says that by the year 2070, the grow, the world gross domestic product could be reduced by fifty percent.
Mister, your four minutes is up.
Because of climate warming.
Thank you.
My time's up?
Yes, sir.
Every opportunity we have to do something without burning any kind of fuel, we need to do it. And this is an opportunity for you to save Scott County.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Item number six on the agenda is the events application. First, item A is the Fourth of July Parade. And Mr. Tom Combs is going to come up and talk about that.
Mayor Jenkins and council members, my name is Tom Combs. I'm with the Kiwanis Club of Scott County. And I'm here to ask for approval of our application to conduct the July Fourth Parade this year, held on July Fourth, Friday, July Fourth. The theme this year is Independence Day, the Scott County Way. This parade, I plan to line the participants on College Street and Military Street, as I've done in the past. It would involve closing Main Street from Military down to Broadway, and then Broadway up to College Street to enable the parade. That would be closed from 11 o'clock to about 12:15, something like that. Also, in the areas are reservation, I say that, I want to reserve the Courthouse Square for American Legion. Last year, they were there. They had dunking booth, hot dogs for everybody, all the kids and everything. They do face painting. So they'd request that again this year. And it's included in my application. Any questions?
At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sam. Do I have a second?
I'll say that.
Second made by Ms. Brent. Do I have other further questions and or comments?
It's just a quick question. Is all the paperwork in order for this? Okay. We always like to make sure before we vote on that. So, thank you.
Is there any other questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Combs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the B. Finley 5K. And Mr. Dwayne Ellis?
Little cancel. Just coming for you again this year to try one more round of the Finley 5K. This will be our 13th. We are changing the date a little bit to an August date to try to involve our daughter, who's gone off to call, you know, play college volleyball. So it's a little bit earlier and things like that than we've had in the past. But it would close down Main Street for approximately 30 minutes as we, well, it depends on how fast we can run, but we will close it down for about 30 minutes as we go from Military to Hamilton, down the path there. And, and it takes about 15 to 30 minutes of, of closing at that point. That's about right, chief. I think that's a little chief in here. Probably about right. And that's it. I mean, you know, I agree with Mr. Jesse there, talking about, you know, closing things down, but I also like some of the events that we can bring, you know, a thousand people to 1,500 people downtown Georgetown, too. And that's what we try to do as partner, and try to think of times and things like that, work together. So I think it's a good, good event, event to, to keep that going. So.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this until such time that we finish and finalize the events ordinance and look at alternate routes to keep it off Main Street, because we're trying to keep from shutting down Main Street as much as possible. So I make that motion.
Motion is made by Mr. Stone. Is there a second?
I'll second. And I'll second it for Todd and take a look at it. Wouldn't you say your date was?
August 2nd.
August 2nd. Is that a Saturday?
Saturday at 6 o'clock. It's 6 p.m.
Could I ask a question as well? Or is that appropriate?
Well, go ahead.
Okay. Some of the things that we are trying to address are the times. And so it's, it's good for us to know what time you're planning it. And the ordinance tonight is a first reading. And we looked at early in the morning and being done by nine, at, to close Main Street, and then only after five. So if you're on Main Street, it would be after five o'clock.
Yeah, 6 o'clock.
Okay. It's something that we're, we were trying to look at.
Sure, I agree with that, yeah.
So, and then, well, if we're going to postpone it, we're...
I need to finish with the...
Okay. That's, that's the only question we have then.
So we have a motion made and properly second. Are there further questions and or comments?
Just, I'm sorry, just one more comment, just so that you know. We're, we're having a first reading of the ordinance tonight.
Okay.
And so, so we're not postponing it for a long time.
Okay.
We're post, we're going to have a first reading tonight, and then hopefully vote on it next time. But maybe it, it may take a time or two more. But we're not pushing you off indefinitely.
It does affect events. You know, I'm not the only one. It's, it will, it will affect me.
Yeah.
Everything is on hold for another month, you know. And I'm already a little late as, as I normally am. So it takes a lot to put on one of these things.
And I...
I know, I know. No, I'm just, I'm not, I'm just speaking for the other people that put these things on, too. It does take a lot.
I fully support you, sir. Okay. Are there any other questions and or comments? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say likewise.
Aye. I think, well, I think if we could, that what's in the ordinance is met here. If all the paperwork were written.
Yeah, that's a question I have, is, is all, that all the paperwork's not in?
The only thing I don't have is my insurance. I can't do it until I have a date.
Okay, then.
And that's part of the ordinance, too, that everything has to be in place.
But again, you're going to have to change that a little bit, because guys like me can't get the insurance for the date until we get an approval by the date. So you're making me work backwards.
Okay.
Because if I go get insurance for a date, and then you all don't approve it, like you're just not going to right now, then, you know, you understand that process. So there needs to be at least some sort of whatever in there, if you are going to change a date on me or something, or deny a date.
Would, would, is it too much of an inconvenience to come back?
No, it's not. No, it's not.
Okay.
I'm just telling you one of those pitfalls of, of when you ask for paperwork that can't necessarily be done before you get a date.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so the motion has, to postpone it, has passed. And then I guess we'll come back with that.
That'll work. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. It's time, mayor's comments. Before I start, I want to kind of make sure to correct something I erroneously said the last time about the cost of living. You know, probably the word using for mandate was not the proper word to use. It's not really mandated, all right? So make sure we understand that. But the cost of living adjustment is done by the Department of Local Government, who publishes this yearly. And that's what is used to, through a calculation process, is what is used to, for the purpose of, for cost of living adjustment for this council. In two thousand thirteen, the ordinance was put together to indicate the cost of living increase shall be adjusted automatically on an annual basis, according to the competition of the state finance and administration cabinet. Now, through an ordinance, it was made, so it can be changed, unless I'm saying correctly, but only by legislation, it can be, it can be repealed. So if you have any other questions, I do have Megan here, because she can further give you any, any other explanation you would need. So I hope I did it correctly there.
Yeah.
All right. So I wanted to make sure you understand that. And if I erroneously said that last time, I want to correct myself and make sure it's correct. Also, I want to thank again Chief Bruin for their work last week in these, once again, we had another snow event, and once again, our streets were passable and opened up to where that. So I am always appreciative of you and your staff working those twelve-hour shifts to get that done. And, and this is, you've been two for two, and we want to make sure that you keep it that way, all right? Okay. So, no, so, so thank you for what you're doing with Public Works. All right. At this, next on item number eight is the Finance Committee.
Mayor?
Yes.
Go back. Go back to the council revenue forecasting.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Hold it. So the council revenue forecasting event, so I'm sorry. All right, Stacy, you want to come in and tell us a little bit about that?
This is something we've done every year for several years with council. It was in the packet for you this time, and then we're also, Blue Tracy also sent an email out. So just as we begin this budget process, we do this just so council members can be a little more educated on our revenue sources, especially for our new council members. Try to have a little cheat sheet in there with assumptions, things you might need to know about each revenue category that is budgeted. So we obviously greatly appreciate it and strongly encourage everyone to participate. And in the email that was sent out, it said if you will return those to me by March nineteenth at noon, then we will be able to share them in the packet for the March twenty-fourth meeting. Results will be anonymous. It'll just say council member one, two, three, four. And again, if you have any questions, you have my email and my phone number to my office in that email as well. So any questions at this time about that? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. All right, now, I can go to item eight. Council Committee Reports, and I think it's the Finance Committee.
Mayor asked that we could do those next committee. My email crashed, and I do not have access to them. So if anybody has them, I'd be glad to.
That's a good, you know, as a teacher, as a former teacher, that would not be a very good excuse to bring to my classroom that you didn't have. But yes, we will make sure that we put that on to the next committee.
Thank you, I appreciate it. That's better than the dog items.
Yeah, well, you may have to go into detention because of not having your homework, all right? All right. Okay, see, next we have with us item number nine, the Traffic Calming Program Presentation from Banks Engineering. So I'll let Eddie come up and tell us a little bit about that.
Sure. Thank you all. Oh, he's got it up there already. Okay. So this presentation is kind of the results of a study that was done to look at ways to slow people down who are speeding, primarily traffic calming measures that the city could incorporate in specific locations as they are deemed necessary or we get enough people requesting them. We have a traffic committee, as you all know. I sit on the committee along with two representatives from City Council, police fire, a representative from the state. And we take a lot of calls and we discuss a lot of different matters. And traffic and speeding is, is one of the, one of the biggies that, that we, that are always popping up. And so we wanted to figure out a way to address those complaints and a way to make decisions to implement, potentially implement, traffic calming measures. And so we embarked on a study, we put it in RFP, had a consultant selected to help us, and we took four, four areas as a pilot project to, to look at. And then we have tools to implement anywhere we want it. I'm not going to ask, we're not going to ask for any action tonight. We just want to present the information, give you all a chance to look at it, ask questions and address them to the mayor if you have questions at a later date. And then we'll bring it back at a, at a later meeting for you all to formally adopt. But we didn't want to do that tonight. And so there are a couple of slides that we edited at the last minute. They're very minor changes. So if they look a little bit different from what's in your packet, you have to, you have both the PowerPoint, which you'll see up here, and also the full report with all the data and everything, all the information in there. And let's see, next slide, please. So for the agenda, we'll have some introductions. I'll introduce the consulting team that, that did the work for us. And we also have the traffic calming program objectives, which is, we'll go over the scope of the work, some of the findings and results, some of the recommendations, and then give you a chance to ask any questions while we got everybody here. The next slide, please. The objectives were to assess the traffic safety concerns in neighborhoods. Again, this is in response to phone calls that we received from the public generally. And we picked four, we had four neighborhoods identified for this initial study, the Pleasant Valley Neighborhood, Payne Avenue, Gano Avenue, Indian Hills Neighborhood, and the Showalter Neighborhood, where we have had a number of calls in each of those areas. Then we wanted to develop a neighborhood traffic calming program where we identify different, different things that could be implemented into our street system as a potential for traffic calming. And we had a, we want a toolbox of potential traffic controls and improvements, which is different items that we'll, we'll show you here in a few minutes, that you can build within the streets to slow cars down. And then we wanted to have a defined process for assessments and implementation. So we, there's three tiers that will be identified. The tier one is pretty minor, and then tier two and tier three would go to, go to you all for final approval in the future, should we implement one of those. Next slide, yeah. The field recog, we did field reconnaissance of the target areas, so we went out and drove the areas, looked at them. We identified areas for further study. We developed, they developed a toolbox, which includes public education, regulatory enforcement, traffic calming measures at intersections and mid-block locations. And then we had a technical memorandum summarizing the findings. So all that information's in your packet to look at. Next slide, please. So these are the, these are the areas. This map shows the areas, Pleasant Valley up at the top, Gano kind of in the middle, Indian Hills and Showalter kind of right together at the bottom of the page. Those are the areas that were, that were done. So I'm going to turn this over now to our team, John Bank, John Steinmetz and Scott Knievel. Thank you. He's with, there with two engineering firms that did the study for us.
Thank you very much. So we're looking at, if we advance the slide, so from a findings perspective, we looked at existing conditions, and we also did a high-level safety analysis of the four different locations. So in the report, you'll see that there's a crash diagram in the back, eleven by seventeens, and it just plots where the crashes occurred over a three-year period, twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two. It also shows if they were injury crashes as well. So just want to point out that the safety analysis was neighborhood-specific. So those maps do show crashes that are occurring on roadways that are adjacent to the neighborhood. So for example, Broadway borders a couple of the neighborhoods. While we plot those crashes, the analysis did not necessarily take those into account. We were looking specifically at just the neighborhood streets. So for example, the, the table you see on this slide shows the crashes within the Pleasant Valley Neighborhood. So eight crashes over three years of the four locations is actually one of the lower crash locations within the study areas that we looked at. Roadways are, have, you know, curvilinear roadways, not necessarily straight roadways, which promotes lower speeds, somewhat narrower street widths compared to some of the others, which contribute probably to the lack of injury crashes, which is a good thing. And then there is also some traffic signals or mini roundabouts in the neighborhood, which also contributes, I think, to the calming effect that's already in place for Pleasant Valley. So moving on to the next one, look, we also looked at Payne and Gano Avenues. It's a, a couple roadway pairs. This one, wide, flat, very conducive to higher speeds, which likely contributes to the fact that we do experience some injury crashes within this particular study area. So twenty-eight crashes, frequency higher, with three of those being injury crashes. So dark in wet conditions. We're also contributing factors in this location, actually the crash type, the number one crash type is angle, which is unusual compared to the other three. With these being neighborhood streets, you'll see that backing is the primary crash type in the other three locations, which is consistent with, I think, what you'd expect from a neighborhood street. Next slide. Looking at Indian Hills, again residential neighborhood, twenty-two crashes over a three-year period, one injury. We suspect cut-through traffic is contributing to the, the crash pattern here. And as I just noted before, a clear primary crash type being backing crashes. So when we looked at countermeasures, I'll say that, you know, we're kind of looking at while there's twenty-two crashes, Indian Hills and Gano had twenty-eight crashes, they're still fairly distributed. So I think when we're looking at countermeasures, we're looking at more systemic type of countermeasures versus location-specific. Because what a crash happening at driveway one year might happen at the neighboring driveway the next. So looking at more contributing factors than necessarily location-specific countermeasures. So in the last one, looking at is Showalter Drive, Collector Street, that does, let's say encourages speeding, definitely doesn't discourage speeding, does connect to some adjacent neighborhoods. Again, thirty-one crashes over three years, but one injury crash at this location, primary crash type being backing as well. So with that, we'll get into some of the recommendations. John?
Thanks, Scott. Hello, mayor, council. We invited CMT to be on our team because they had two staff members that worked for the Lexington Urban County Government and set up and administered their traffic calming program. So the approach we try to take for you is a, is a simplified version of Lexington's program, something tailored for your community. So I think Eddie mentioned early on, we talked about three tiers, and the tiers go up in complexity and cost, et cetera, ease of implementation, construction intensity. The tier one would be low-cost, pretty easy to implement, you know, lane striping, signage, things like that, that can have a surprisingly big effect on the speeds that are being realized on the streets. And you'll notice that on each one of these tiers, we set up a, a level of authorization. So for the simplified version, we looked at the traffic committee being able to approve certain implementation elements for that. When you go up to the tier two, you're starting to get into more construction, relatively light construction, I think. A lot of you probably are familiar with speed tables versus speed bumps versus speed humps. And you see a little version there, it might be kind of hard for you to read on the screen, but if you're not familiar with them, it's a, that would be a vertical control to slow traffic down as they're crossing over the speed table and speed humps. That level would be approved by City Council upon recommendations from the traffic committee. And the tier three would be much more significant construction, where you're really changing the, the character of the roadway. For instance, you can construct bumpouts, chicanes to take some of these very wide streets, narrow them down in certain areas, just to make drivers slow down, they're getting through the obstacle. Still safe for emergency vehicles and drivers, et cetera, but it, it makes them think about jumping down the road too fast. Then another corridor change on the tier three would be something like we had looked at for Gano and Payne, where you have very, very wide streets that has much more pavement than what's necessary for the drivers and on-street parking. So there's opportunities there to narrow up that street, maybe make, add some more, you know, take out some pavement and put in some grass utility strips, maybe improve the drainage a little bit when you're doing that. So the tier three improvements would be much more complex, bigger projects. Next slide, please. So Pleasant Valley, I think Scott alluded to it, it was, we didn't see a lot of, there didn't seem to be a lot of accident history there, some accidents, but the roads are already relatively narrow, and we think there are some improved signage and markings. And then you can see on the picture, one of those permanent speed limit signs. They're pretty effective at, at calling people's attention to the speeds they're, they're going. Next slide, please. And Payne Avenue and Gano, I kind of touched on that. Tier one and tier two improvements to try to narrow up the streets and give the drivers a little pause when they're, when they're speeding down the roadway. Both Payne, Gano and Pleasant Valley, fairly high, it appears to have a lot of children in the area, a lot of pedestrians in there, too. So that's a, that's another safety consideration. Next slide, please. On Indian Hills, it's a much bigger area and it has a lot of different, different nature to that neighborhood. It's older, less urban roadway design, but there are a lot of cut-through traffic, a lot of places where you can really get up speeds. So there, again, we're having with a tiered effect of tiers. Tier one with enforcement and pavement markings, but also there's some, several intersections that we noted that could use a traffic sign or a stop sign warrant analysis, where multiway stops might, might be warranted. And we don't recommend putting them up without the warrant analysis because it's an important part of the application there. And on this, and in Indian Hills, along with Showalter, you have streets that are coming in from other neighborhoods. So one way to calm the traffic is to have kind of a gateway. You've probably seen those when you're entering a new neighborhood. It constricts the, the roadway at the gateway location, but also announces to the drivers that they're coming into a more residential community. So those also improve the aesthetics of the neighborhood and kind of help define the different portions of the transportation network. And again, chicanes, bumpouts, whatever, you could lose a little bit of on-street parking to bring landscape... you could lose a little bit of on-street parking to bring landscape bumpouts into the road to try to narrow it in strategic locations. So, next slide. And Showalter Drive, again, I kind of touched on that already. The, it's wide, long, straight, and just says "speed down me." So, we want to try to break that up as best you can with pavement markings, that we did a preliminary layout for that, which we'll show you in a second. But other improvements similar to Indian Hills could include those bumpouts or chicanes and the gateway treatment. Next slide. And it might be kind of hard to tell on this slide, but what we've tried to do is on a thirty-two-foot-wide pavement, where they're not really doing a lot of on-street parking, we could define the two travel lanes at eleven-and-a-half foot width, and then a eight-and-a-half-foot-wide parking lane on one side. So, just having those two eleven-and-a-half-foot lanes instead of two basically sixteen-foot lanes that you have out there right now would be a low-cost way to try to reduce traffic on that road. So, next slide. So, as far as the process goes, what we've described so far is kind of the issues and potential solutions in these four target areas. But we also tried to define, and this is a draft process, it's subject to your all's comments and suggestions and edits. But what we recommend is that the traffic committee is the first point where these issues come to light, and they would then assess them, and if they're judged to have merit, then they would be assigned. Some of them might be just enforcement issues going to the police department. Other ones would go to the city engineer for further consideration. The city engineer would do their work, police department would do their work, and any neighborhood projects, rather than have a single resident come to you and create a situation where you have to spend a lot of time and money making assessments, we'd recommend that it be supported by the HOA or some, if, in the absence of an HOA, a petition of the residents on the street to make sure that you're not spending your resources doing things that aren't in the best interest of the majority of the people. So, the city engineer would go through that and then send recommendations back to the traffic committee. And again, these are just draft suggestions that we've come up with. Next slide. And that's about the end of our, we have a lot more details in the report itself that you all have copies of. We'd be happy to take your questions tonight or at some time in the future, if you want to take more time to digest them. But thank you for your time on this matter.
Okay, so anyone have any questions they want to ask? Like I said...
You described something that started with a C, and I can't find it here. And what is it? Tell me what that is again.
Yeah, we should have brought a picture of that with us, but say you're driving down one of the Indian Hills roadways, and you cut out a piece of the pavement to take it from a wide road to put a constriction in there. And it would be done with landscaping to make it a very visible and obvious change, but it's something that, instead of having sixteen-foot lanes and straight and narrow, you're bringing them down to ten- or eleven-foot lanes to squeeze through there. Still adequate for school buses, emergency vehicles, snowplows, et cetera. Those would be, I think, one term we use is horizontal deflections versus vertical deflections like speed humps.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Based on your experience in other places, would you say that the speeding and the injuries are numerically significant enough to implement any more than tier-one? I don't know how to, I don't know when, data-wise, you would, you know, want to say, gee, this ought to be tier-one, this ought to be tier-two, or we could just do it by greater enforcement with our traffic people or whatever.
Well, Scott may have something to add to this, but I think that kind of depends on the nature of the drivers. Some drivers will pay attention to tier-one improvements, and it will affect their habits. Other ones won't care if the road is striped, they're gonna, they're gonna keep driving their speed. But, do you have anything, Doctor, there?
Yeah, I would say that, you know, obviously, this starts with a citizen request, but, you know, some of the safety data, if there is a trend for injury crashes, that may contribute to an interest to take it to the next tier. Speed data that is collected as a part of the process is that if you're seeing speeds that are eight, ten miles per hour above posted, you're pushing thirty-two, thirty-five miles per hour, and you don't have a crash pattern, to me, that would indicate that you have a high potential for a future injury crash. So, between the historical data and some of the actual data that you'd collect as a part of the process, I think that those two factors would weigh into whether or not you'd want to increase the level of effort, the costs associated with some of the higher-tier levels.
One of the first things, Willa, that we've got to do, you take, for instance, Seminole Trail.
Right. It's a mess.
You go from the bypass to the roundabout, then you travel two streets, you've got a stop sign, stop sign, stop sign. The last stop sign is at Hutchins Drive. The next traffic-controlled device is past her house at Broadway.
Yeah.
Aztec, one stop sign. Pocahontas, two stop signs, one at Seminole, one at Redding Lake or Redding Road, where Philip Pratt lives. Then it's a drag strip. The simple thing for is education, and the reason that I know this, I was a cop for twenty-four years, twenty-two years, excuse me. Simple things such as stop signs and enforcement would go a long way. And I know that there's a whole process that we have to go through with this, but we need to put that in place, you know, because I've had residents on Gano Avenue that say that they've heard cars start at one end of Gano, and by the time they get to the middle of Gano, they're doing forty and fifty miles an hour, sometimes sixty. I've seen it on Aztec, I've seen it on Pocahontas, I've seen it on Showalter, Seminole. It's the reason we brought up these streets, because if the traffic controls are not spread out, they're useless. Bunching three up together and then going, okay, the rest of you just fend for yourself. You know, that's not using the resources wisely, so just my thoughts.
One thing to add to that, that's a good question, Will, is under our current subdivision regulations, we have tier-twos and tier-threes spaced out every so many feet on new roadways that are getting built to do subdivisions. A lot of these are older, that predate, and we're seeing the, in fact, one of the areas that we chose, which was Pleasant Valley, is new with the newer regs, and we saw much lower crashes and issues out there, because they have traffic calming measures in there already.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we're trying to solve, we're trying to retrofit.
It's, Eddie and I have talked about this, when Connie was on there, we talked about it, and it's, it's nothing easy. There's nothing easy about it. And just going to say, whoop, we're gonna put a stop sign there. Okay, why? Where's the documentation? What's the reasoning behind it? So, you know, Eddie's got a monstrous headache with that, and, you know, I'm gonna be there to try and help him out as long the way, as much as I can too, so it's...
But should we implement a two or a three, it would come, if we go through the traffic committee, come here for a thorough review, and you all go give the okay to it?
Mr. Mickey?
Yeah, thank you for this description. That was greatly helpful. Where, when does the education component start in this process? And to be able to perhaps pre-educate and let the folks in the neighborhoods know, this is what we're thinking, and this is where it could go if we're not able to change behaviors. How does that work?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really great question and hard to implement, and I'm not sure if I have a complete answer on that. I probably need to give that some thought and get back. I would say it would probably start with the HOAs and getting in, getting through there, maybe getting in front of one of their board meetings and getting some information out to a targeted area where we're seeing, you know, lots of problems. I think we should probably start there. And then, things like this, open meetings, public meetings, information on the website, those sorts of things.
Yeah. And I think, I think that's a great idea, because the HOA is a great avenue to be able to do that. But in the neighborhoods that don't have HOAs, maybe being able to identify and do some type of mass communication to those residents to be able to help with the facilitation, because the more we can educate ahead of time, the easier the implementation would be. The other thing, and I'm glad you've already brought it up, is basically having that partnership or that connection with P&amp;Z and our existing new best practices that are put into place, trying to duplicate those as much as possible, I think is really important. The final thing that I would just mention is, with the new technologies that are in cars now, with the lane sensing and things like that, striping will do a lot of very good deterrence by being able to have good striping. But again, that comes with newer vehicles and things like that, and that just takes time, but it does provide some additional deterrents.
We've done, we've already done a number, implemented a number of things over by Lowe's, the little cut-through between Lowe's and Coles. If you remember, when we resurfaced that, we completely changed the striping through there to improve the turn lanes. And so, we've already implemented a number of different projects that, on the striping side, not the tier-twos or the tier-threes, but lower levels.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions or comments?
Thank you all very much.
Eddie, gentlemen, thank you all so much. Next, on item ten is the Republic Service Update, and we have with us Todd and Matt is here on Republic, and they're gonna do a presentation. And then after that presentation, we will be able to answer some questions. We invite him here. Be here tonight. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
If you all introduce yourselves, so people know.
For those who don't know me, my name's Todd Prer. I'm the manager of municipal sales. Matt Elkins is the operations manager. Tim, our GM, is usually here with me, sends his regrets. He's just had a lot of family issues, and unfortunately, most of those have been out of town. But he will, he does his best to always get here with me. So, we know there's been some issues. You know, last time we were here, Tim and I talked about what we had discovered then, and what we were doing to correct that. We've done those things, and unfortunately, we have this thing called weather that really hit us, and I'm with everybody else. We're not accepting any more weather for the rest of '25. That's not gonna be a good thing. So, I wanted to come tonight, share some stats, share some things that we've been doing, what we're continuing to do, what we're going to do. We've had some pleasant conversations with Devin and Mayor and Emily the past couple weeks, and we've gotten your all's questions. I know you have a list of them in front of you. There's a couple that hadn't been answered yet, and I will address those as well tonight, and of course, address anything else that you have. So, first slide, please. And, bear with me, I'm not the greatest on PowerPoint. I did my best, all right? So, the stats, you'll see, the total drive-bys at the top line, that's seven hundred, yeah, I can't even read it myself. What is that, Matt? Seven hundred and fifty thousand? I got it right here. Seven hundred and six thousand plus. MSW stands for Metro Solid Waste, Metropolitan Solid Waste. So, that's your trash. So, seven hundred and one thousand drive-bys. And I'm sorry, these numbers are from January through Thanksgiving, and that's when we discovered that last issue. Sorry about that. So, from that time, we had confirmed missed pickups of seven hundred and eighty-one missed pickups out of the seven hundred and one thousand drive-bys, giving you a percentage of point-one-one percent of misses, confirmed misses. When I say confirmed misses, they were either confirmed by the driver either called it in saying the cart wasn't out, confirmed by GPS that the driver didn't even go by, or by the video cameras that we talk about when we're here all the time. Then you get to the recycling drive-bys, it was fifty-five thousand plus, with eighty-seven missed pickups, with a percentage of point-one-six. So, percentage-wise, I know the number looks big, but percentage-wise, not terrible, right? The most that were the worst was February, May, and March, and then by day was Friday, Monday, and Wednesday. Next slide. So, one thing that we've done is taken those confirmed misses and overlaid it on a map, on our sequencing map. And this is where they're all pinpointed. You know, Mayor has told us, you know, Pleasant Valley, Peninsula, and one other one, I forget. And there was several.
I think Mount Vernon.
Mount Vernon, yep, exactly. So, this has allowed us to kind of go in and take a harder look. Where most of the misses have taken place is from the newest driver. And how we're gonna combat that with him is our behind-the-wheel instructor is gonna be getting back in the truck with him and be riding with him until he is pure, right? Till he is running the route exactly the way it should be ran every day, every week. Next slide, please. Devin, this is, you asked me to find duplicates on the spreadsheet that I'd sent. So, people had called in, same time span, people had called in twice, a hundred and three, three call-ins was thirty-one, four call-ins was eleven, and then five and six where each had one. The six was easy to determine. It's a backdoor service over in the Housing Authority, and we'll address that with the driver tomorrow. I just found that today before I came in. I'll be personally at a conference for the next few days, and during my downtime, I'm gonna be investigating some more of them, just to see if there's any call-ins or anything like that from the driver, cart wasn't out or anything like that. I don't like to see any call-ins. My more concerns are the three and higher, right? Let's see where those are at. Let's see what's causing those and address it there. Next slide, please. This is an example. Matt's got several, but I just put one. This is, this is actually, somebody called in, this is a miss. So, these are some of the things that we're getting as a missed pickup. Not all, I know that, but I just want to show that this is some of the things that we do get a call-in about. Next slide, please. So, this is one of the questions that had been answered. What is Republic's understanding of the magnitude of the problem and how they are tracking progress improvement? What is the termination of percentage performance to the agreed-on contract? I'm not even gonna read my answer, even though I typed it. You guys can have it, but I just want to speak to it. As far as the percentage of the contract, look, you guys chose us, you hired us to do a job. We intend completely to do that job at a hundred percent capacity. Will there be errors? Will there be errors on both sides? Absolutely. But as long as there's still one percent out there, that means there's room left to improve upon, right? There is no question what we're here to do. We intend to do it. We have the capability to do it. We have everything in front of us to do it. We have the drivers, we have the trucks, the leadership. I'm very confident that it will be to what you all expect. And I'm sorry it's come down to this, right? That is where we're at with that question. Next slide, please. So, the one question was, what can the city, including council, do to help in identifications and all that? You know, sometimes we get like the missed call, and really, that's not a miss, right? If we just, when you're talking to a resident, just, you know, try to get as much in a little bit amount of time, you know? What time was your cart out? Instead of saying, did you have your cart out, right? Because a lot of times, they put it out after us. So, they did put it out, but it wasn't out in time. Bulk items are a big one on the misses. There's preparation on some of them, such as mattresses needing to be wrapped, you know? There was a mattress wrapped. Sometimes if it's super-heavy, we gotta get another driver out. We've talked about that before. We're working with Gina on calling people and letting them know, hey, we know you got a bulk item, it's too heavy for one guy. If we don't get it today, we'll be back tomorrow with the second guy to help. with the second guy to help get it loaded, right? We will get better on that part of it. And just to make sure the cart was out in the clear, that we could grab it, wasn't behind a parked car, next to a telephone pole, you know, anything like that. So we are working and putting together a calendar to meet here more regularly, as long with follow-ups with the Mayor's Office. We will live up to that, somebody from leadership would be here more often, for sure. May not have a presentation or anything, but we will be here for any questions, and sometimes we'll just bring all good stuff, like what we're doing at the landfill and what kind of exciting ventures we have going on in the company. So I know you guys have questions. Mr. Stone, I would expect nothing less, sir.
One of the things, and I just sent it to the Mayor, one of the issues that, that I get a lot of is the drivers, when they pick them up, you know, and then they set them back down, I just sent three, three pictures of one residence that the cans are split. No, they're split, wheels are off of them, you know? And I labeled the email "trash can abuse," but you know, it's, you know, it, it's not, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to be funny about it.
No, no, no.
But it's, it's still, it's still an ongoing issue that the drivers have done, so.
So I'm not going to put that totally on the drivers. Those arms, they have a pillow, a cushion, right? And they can only control like the cycle, they can't like ease it down. Some of the trucks, some of them they can, and we got to bring that to the maintenance team, right? I know you got big problems, but this little, this pillow needs to be replaced.
Something else we saw this time of year, too, is with that, that cold weather snap, where it stayed so cold for so long, these cans are plastic, and they get brittle and brittle and brittle. So we've seen several busted cans, this is not just isolated to Georgetown.
Right, right. And it's, that's one of the things, I, I was just, got the, got the picture sent to me, and I said, I, I'll bring it up to council Monday night, so.
And I, I didn't know where you were going with it, it was broken with the cans laying down, we did talk about that as well. You know, our drivers, they're supposed to place the container back where they picked it up from, and the only reason why they shouldn't is if it's, if it's in an area where it's not really safe to put it back, you know, too close to a mailbox, to a car, something like that. That's the only reason why he should move it to another place.
Are they replacing the busted cans?
Yes, ma'am, when we know about, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Right. The driver won't always know, like, most of them are split in the back, around the back corner, and he won't see that.
Okay, so that's where we need to call and just tell them that we need, is there, there's no charge, or?
No, there's no charge. And I'll say while I'm thinking about it, the app is a wonderful place to go for that.
Okay.
You can report a missed pickup, report a busted container, and that immediately creates a, a work order where it takes a lot of phone calls out of the picture, you know, a third person.
Of course, the elder, not a lot of the elder, the senior citizens and stuff are on the app.
I, I understand that, we do know that.
So I just wanted to make sure and clarify that.
But those that like it, it's a great tool.
Okay.
It's a great tool.
Mayor, I have.
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks for bringing this report and keeping into, in communication with us. I'm still seeing, I mean, if, if the mechanical arm drops it down and it just, you know, splits it, or it falls over, whatever, is it not still the responsibility for them to stop the truck, get out, and put it up? Because sometimes it's in the middle of the road.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, he needs to put it back where it got from.
And so they have a camera back there, they can see whether or not it, it, it fell down, is that correct?
The cameras, the same Sarah cameras are forward-facing, so basically, he, the camera picks up the container as he's driving up, it's, it doesn't have a, a sideways camera.
So how are we going to know, then, whether or not we're leaving a trail of downed cans? How, how, how's the driver going to know that?
I'll speak more on the, the broken side. He sees the container being set back down, right? He sees that, yes, and he should get out and pick it back up and put it back.
And they can see whether or not trash flew out, whether or not it's because the constituent didn't put it in a bag, which I know happens is a problem, but.
If he's driving on the left-hand side, because all those residential trucks have left and right, if he's driving on the right-hand side, he can see it. Some of those trucks, it's not conducive right now with the weather and stuff to be on the right-hand side, because some of the doors won't close, so he'll be freezing. If he's on the left-hand side, he can't really see anything falling out. Is it all Corrado out here?
Except for one.
Except for one. So the Corrado trucks are the trucks that have the container in the front, right? Those are the ones that you can't really see. He'll be driving on the left-hand side sometimes, but if he's on the right-hand side, he can see trash fall out.
Because.
Like the one on video today.
Yeah.
He was left-hand driving.
Okay.
So he did not see that.
That's, that's a big problem that I'm hearing from a lot of constituents, is that it's just trash. It's a trail, in fact, one time, just where I live, on a circle, you know, about every third house had trash. And so I got in my car and went and stopped the driver before they got out of the circle, and I said, you know, if you could just make another swing around the circle, because there's little gumdrops of trash all the way around. I don't know if there's another way for them to figure out whether or not they're leaving trash everywhere, but it is a problem.
We know the loose trash has been a problem.
Yeah.
But we do know that, and we, we, we continue to try to get out, bag it, bag it, bag it, as, as, you know, councils help us out on that before. And that's one of the other things I want to do, is, you know, when I first came into this area, I put together an FAQ sheet, if y'all remember, the ones that were on council. I want to do it more often, and, and again, not just, hey, do this, do this, do that, but more of, did you know type things. And again, include good stuff on there as well, you know, what we're, what we want to do in the community and, and be a part of it. You know, we're a partnership, and we, we want to, we want to be that and continue to be that.
One more question, and, and it doesn't seem like there's an easy way to fix the trash problem, but I think we need to, I think we need to creatively find a better solution than I'm, than I'm hearing, and I, I realize bagging it is important, but sometimes the bags break as the, as the can is throwing it in as well, so. I, I did get some calls this week about the recycling not being picked up as routinely as, even if it's late, there was one person today said it's been six weeks since my recycling's been picked up.
Really?
So.
I have not heard anything on the recycling and the things, really.
I'll, I'll make sure, Mayor, that that gets sent to you, so that they can know where that's at.
Please.
But are they on the same kind of responsibility as making up than the regular routes?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
And be sure to put their address down, so they know which one to go to.
Yep, I'll do that.
Thank you.
And that's one that's great, where those cameras are coming to effect, Matt can pull it up, make sure the container's out in time, and all that good stuff.
And did you tell us how, what percentage of the misses are, they didn't have the can out, or the can wasn't out on time, versus, well, they just drove by, or they missed the street?
The ones that I showed were actually confirmed misses. Those aren't just call-ins, those are confirmed misses.
So how do you miss it? It sounds like a dumb question, but, I mean, if that's your route, and those are the houses...
There's a few, there's a few times. One, one of the ones that I've seen the most, and I'm not in operations, but if you live on a corner house, and we got like a sub-driver in there, a lot of times, he's expecting that garbage can to be on this side of the street where it's really around the corner.
Okay.
And he just didn't get it. Another one that happens is, he packs out, he fills up the truck, and forgets exactly where he stopped at, and doesn't get back to it. But that's, that's the two that happen the most, in my opinion. You might have more to add to that, Matt.
Yeah, and fill-in drivers, like if we have a driver on PTO, and we have someone running his route that's not the normal driver, we see misses from time to time there. Backdoor stops, you know, for elderly, if there's a fill-in driver, we don't, you know, we'll see those misses there where the guy filling in just didn't know that that was a backdoor stop, you know, the can's by their house, and, you know, they just overlooked it, but I understand, I understand your point. It seems, it seems very obvious.
Okay.
Does the blue can pick it up, right?
Mm-hmm.
It, like you said, it seems very obvious, but it, it happens.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, so, so a couple of, couple of things. There's a gentleman that posted on Facebook this week, and Todd and I were tagged into it, and he had it on camera, that it wasn't a plastic bag, so they were doing the correct thing, they picked it up, the bag, bag didn't end up in the, the trash can, into the truck, so it was left on the street. So he, he was complaining about that, and he says this happens all the time, and just happened to get it on and posted it on Facebook. Asked me what street he lived on, he said, "Doesn't matter, the whole city is having issues." I said, "It does, because we're trying to pinpoint if some areas are having more problems than others of it." And I said, "But I agree that it can be a mess." And then he writes back to me, "If you read the comments on this post, it's the whole city, and according to some of the drivers, have retaliated for complaints. I don't want them being nice just in front of the cameras, and then for us to embarrass you, but they have dates on the truck, numbers on the truck, from video and pictures, so they know exactly who the driver is, exactly what the truck is, and who's at fault, and what time of the day it is." Is that correct?
We have those cameras.
So if somebody has, so if somebody has, like everyone has a video, and can show us the video, we show the mayor the video, you can go straight to him and then correct that problem and see what that, why he's dropping the trash, because the last meeting that we had that we were all griping about it, or I was at least, that was one of the things, it was like, oh, we want the public to be more educated, well, the public's a contender to be educated at this point in time, they just want their trash picked up. And here today, it's this area, tomorrow it's that area, the next day it's that area, and so people are getting frustrated.
Understandably, and I believe the Facebook poster you're talking about is the one I kind of mentioned earlier. He was driving on that left-hand side and didn't see the bag fall out.
Could be.
And that's, it's one I'm assuming it is, and when I see, so when I see things on Facebook, I am very good about, I'll even go to white pages to find out where the address is at, if it's not on there, and we address it.
Okay.
We address it.
Well, in my personal situation, for what I personally experienced, I have experienced what you were talking about, where they went all the way up and down the street, probably the truck was full, because people have asked me, well, why, why did they do that? And I said, well, probably the truck was full at that point in time. But then they come back, and instead of starting again at my house, they go five houses up and stop, so there's five of us that get missed in the comeback, when they don't come back. So we called and left messages, and they will come back, but then I've also had calls, I also have another place that you pick up trash for me, and it's a little awkward. So what you're talking about, if it's a temporary driver, it's awkward for them, and they miss it. But when I call in to make a complaint that it's been missed or whatever, they'll say, oh, we'll come back next week and get it, or we weren't there today, because I always check my neighbors to make sure it got picked up and things like that. So I don't get the straight scoop from what really happened. I mean, the bottom line is, oh, we overlooked it. That's all you need to say, come back and get it, so.
Yeah, they shouldn't be providing excuses.
There should not be any excuses, the bottom line is, may mistake.
They got missed.
We overlooked it, we'll be back. But the other thing is, I had to argue with them, because the secondary place is a business, I can't let the trash pile up, because they don't have room for the trash to pile up, and then they'll say, we'll be back next week, or we'll be back on two or three days or whatever, and I'm like, no, you got to come back today, or you're going to have to pick up all the trash outside the can when you do get back. So how do you, how do you handle those situations?
So a miss, i- if it's a miss, we should be back within 24 hours.
Okay.
Okay? Depending on where the guys are at, the call comes in early enough, and it gets into dispatch quick enough, we come back same day. But, you know, landfill closes, so we're going to be able to get back here in time, driver's got hours, so if it's later in the day, typically, they're not going to be able to get back same day. But regardless, should be there within 24 hours.
So if I'm a business and I have another whole day's worth of trash sitting out there...
We'll have to get it picked up.
You're going to pick that up, even if I said it boxes outside and that kind of thing.
If it, if it was called in as a miss, and there's extra trash, we should get it picked up.
At no fee.
At no fee, no, no fee, no.
Okay, there, well, and my cans are getting split, too, and it's when I, I watch them, I go out there and watch, but it's when they take those little grippers and they grip, and it grips so tight, is where I'm seeing that the cans are splitting, and yeah, they drop them on the ground, but it's.
And anything with hydraulic, right, they'll have to do calculations on them, and they just need to get better at their PMs, basically.
Well, you have bad public relations, I'm just flat-telling you.
I'm sorry?
You got bad public relations with this city. They are not happy.
We are doing our best to correct it, I promise you that.
People, and I say this in every interview I've conducted in the past five years, people are passionate about their trash.
Yes, they are.
They really are.
Yes.
And I, and I totally get it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, for some reason, trash is a personal issue with people, and so maybe it's because it's sitting right in front of their house, or it's theirs and it's sitting right in front of their house, but, oh, yeah, and you all right now don't have, the community is not excited about the service we've got.
I understand.
All right. Mayor? Yes, go ahead. So, thank you for coming and answering some questions and things like that. The, again, I think education, and I don't think you can communicate enough, and I know it sounds like you're doing it over and over and over again, but that's what it takes. When, when the system is working correctly, and, and I've had the good fortune of, of watching that from my office, and even following a truck all the way through the neighborhood one day, the, you could tell that you have a very defined process, and when they're following it, it works to the T. You know, that they stop, they dump, when they're in a stationary position, packing, and all of that, it, it works. The, the thing that I would ask is, when you don't have somebody following the, the standard, get that fixed quickly. And so, great countermeasure to have that instructor back in that, with that driver to be able to do that, but you got to get on that, and you've got to get on it quickly.
Yes, sir.
So that you can get it done, because you've, you've got to be able to pick up all the trash, right? And so if you have a stop, you got to go dump, they've got to make sure that they get back to that place to be able to restart, and it shouldn't be that they have to wait. And I know you've got that built into your, your process and your standards, it's just implement it and communicate it when it doesn't work and what you're doing about it. That was the reason for the question.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Appreciate that feedback, Council.
Just one thing, when they're stopping, I mean, they're full, and you said they sometimes miss, they might miss houses where their last stopping point was. Do you have like a tablet or something that they can key in?
They have a tablet.
Just something simple, just write the address where you last stopped at.
You know, we asked, so the tablets in the trucks are fairly new, and we've asked for that to be implemented on a, on a stopping point. They haven't done it yet.
Sheet a piece, a piece of paper, you know, write down that, I mean, simple.
Again, sometimes the simplest things just seem so simple to us, and it's, you know, the guy's like, I know, I know where I'll be at, so, you know, so, they should, they should write it down for something.
Maybe you can ask them to track that when, when they do the last stop, you know?
Or even hit the record button on it and say, stopped at 123 Main Street.
Right.
Right, so.
Something like that, okay.
I hear you.
All right, are there any other questions? Yes, Mr. Chris?
Yeah, thank you, guys, for coming in. Do you guys have any other similar markets of sizes, of cities that are similar to Georgetown in size that you service, that you've had similar issues with? Or would you say that we're just maybe a little more passionate about our trash than other communities?
So I will say this, we have plenty of cities, and we have counties, we have cities similar to this. What's unique with Georgetown is obviously it was privatization, where the city did it for so long, right? And people got accustomed to trash. I've only had one other privatization, that's the city of Wilmore, that happened this past July, and I, Georgetown's been unique, it really has. But that's not on Georgetown, that's on us to fix it, right? That's, that's on us to figure it out, come to the understanding of this is what it is, and this is what you're going to do, and, you know, I'm really excited. Unfortunately, after the last fix that we had back in November, then you had the holidays, and then you had all that daggone weather. I, I didn't have it on the slides, but we did do a recording of misses from, I think it was January 25th until our last meeting, and they were already, the misses were already down to .005 on the trash. So, it, it's working, we just gotta make sure everybody's on board and stays on board. And we gotta get the one guy better trained. We thought he was ready, and he just wasn't.
You know, that's what I want to, I want to hear, wanted to hear, I wanted to hear you say that instead of it going back to the citizens, because, yeah, we were, we were a unique way that we picked up sanitation here in Georgetown. Very unique. But that's what I want to hear, saying you all recognize there's issues, and you all will fix the issues.
Absolutely.
And you all will do it, not keep saying back onto the community, but it's more, now, that one picture.
And I hope it didn't come across that way. There's some things that we need help.
It has, it has in the past. It has come across that way. And that one picture you show of all that, that was the, the dump sitting out there. Of course, we know you're not responsible for that situation. That's a code for some of those issues. So we understand that. But yes, I want to hear that, that you all are taking responsibility for it, because I made a comment at the last council meeting, if y'all pick up Las Vegas, y'all can figure out how to pick up Little Old Georgetown. So, and you're a big outfit and a big corporation, so we expect that you're able to do that. And I will say, just to take up for the gentleman that is my regular, because he doesn't miss my, at the business part of it, he's very kind, very generous, very nice, courteous. So, kudos to him.
Well, thank you, Councilman.
So him, you're getting trained right. Think some of the others, you need to work a little harder on, on that.
Thank you, Councilmember. And like, the first time I ever stood up here, I, I've always said that I'll always be very transparent. You know, it may not be what you want to hear, but I will, I will not sugarcoat anything. When we know there's something that needs to be fixed, it needs to be fixed.
Well, guess what? I'm just like that, I don't sugarcoat nothing.
All right.
Mayor, if I can, one last thing, and this is kind of looking forward. Chase, when are we opening up?
Are we opening up?
Yeah.
As soon as possible.
Nope, nope.
Goal is March 23rd. We know that it's gonna be extended based on what it is.
Okay. That's when the new, in that ballpark, was when the new wastewater treatment plan will come online, and then expansion starts. What is, in, in, because I know it's gonna get asked, what are your goals for as Georgetown grows? You know, you all are running four, five trucks now?
Four, well, I will call it four and a half, because our driver from Cynthia on his way back now comes in to make sure everybody's completed before anybody leaves.
And as, as neighborhoods are built and expanded, you know, what's your plans to, to, as expansion grows?
If we need trucks, just like Councilwoman over here said, we're big enough to get a truck.
Yeah.
Or two.
Okay.
We have tons, tons of data that shows us where we should be, how many yardages we should be pulling with each truck, you know, and as that data changes, we adapt.
Okay. I'm just thinking ahead because I know that discussion's coming up in a little bit, so, you know, just trying to put out there and, and kind of put, plant that seed that, you know, the expansions are coming, so.
Okay.
Georgetown's special to me, I live here, so I, I like to keep a tight eye on things here.
We now have three managers that actually live in Georgetown.
You should not, you should not have said that.
His name is spelled E-A. So Matt, our operations manager, our sales manager, Mary, just moved up here from Florida. Then actually, our area safety director, manager, lives here in Georgetown as well. We got you covered.
We had poor people away from wanting to come dump trash during, during the snow. Wanting to come dump trash on City Hall on the mayor's office, we had to pull them away. So just leave me your address when you go. Now we know where to direct it to.
All right.
But I just tried to.
Thanks, Todd.
Great question.
Not a problem.
Hey, are there any others?
Thank you all.
Todd, Matt, thank you again, we'll look to see you again on.
Very soon.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. All right, next, the first reading for A, the Zone Change Ordinance, paddock at Jennings Farm, sponsors Todd Stone and Kim Minkie. All right.
Before I take over, would either of you like to say anything? Is the sponsoring, the sponsors of the ordinance?
I certainly will. I, I appreciate them bringing this, this, their property to be developed, this farm family here in this community to do that. And it truly meets, what I've seen of this, it meets the intent of our updated comprehensive plan, and providing a variety of housing, community amenities, mixed commercial use, and also drives additional business and jobs. So I'm proud to sponsor this.
Okay, so I'm here tonight to facilitate this. The applicant's council is here, Brad and planning commission staff are also here. We have two items on the agenda, and I do this every time. So the first one is the zone change, so we're gonna focus on the zone change and the record that you received a copy of. If you have questions about the project itself, kind of what is the concept of this development, or questions related to how this project worked its way through the planning commission and how this recommendation came to you all, we'll do the first reading, finish that one, and then we'll transition into the annexation conversation. So if you'll bear with us, I'm actually just gonna go ahead and turn it over. I don't know, Elise, have you?
Thank you, Emily and councilmembers. So, given that we have some new members and some returning faces, I kind of prepared a little packet of everything, setting some kind of context, the future land use designations, other pieces and parts that were deemed relevant as part of this conversation. When we're referring to rezoning requests, we refer to KRS 100.213, which lists the findings, expectations, and standards that we review as staff and then take before our planning commission board, that then considers staff recommendation, public feedback. They form a recommendation, and then it comes before you guys for the two ordinance hearings, and then any action that you guys end up taking. So, this property in question is two parcels, approximately 180, nope, 178 acres in size. We'd previously seen the distillery site, which, if you guys have driven down Payne's Depot Road at the intersection of McLean Circle, it is all that dirt moving around. It's, it's looking like a dirt farm right now, it's not looking like a whole bunch of anything else. But anyway, that area was previously rezoned to the B5 zone and has been annexed into the city, and the owner of the property is now seeking to rezone the remaining portion of the property to the B5 zone, which is the same as that distillery zone, the R1C zone, which is a single-family designation, the R3 zone, which is a high-density residential designation, and then the C1 zone, each of which having a, a unique kind of purpose and intention for it. I do have in your guys' kind of packet, the second and onward pages kind of have our, this is the difference between future land use designations and zoning designations, the future land use map for the cities, the city itself, and the county as a whole, and then what each designation kind of aligns with and kind of is, is speaking towards. I then also included a excerpt, this 11 by 17, that I'll kind of very briefly show here. This is actually the future land use map that has been designated as part of the 24 Conference of Plan, and then I've included the callouts for each of the sections in question. The commercial areas are proposed to be rezoned, that B5 designation, which is a highly controlled general commercial area, so it's got some very interesting higher standards for development, height, setbacks, and other features. The quasi-public is, does not have a specific zone, so it is often a combination of a zone and the amenities that may be provided therein. The applicant is proposing with this quasi-public area to kind of have a walking path kind of option, as well as some other kind of public indoor amenities potentially. And what I've also submitted after that is the concept plan, which will have some references to some potential activities on the property. It is the other 11, 11 by 17. It is a concept plan, so obviously the applicant can speak to the development potential of the property. Some items may not be executed, some items may. That's kind of up at the development plan phase. But we kind of consider a multitude of zones for that. Schools can go in that property, parks can go in that property, other kind of amenities for the larger public is kind of intended to be in that area. As we move to the south, there's kind of the, the very light yellow, and then there's the kind of darker orangey-yellow, it's still light, but that's our mixed density, or medium density residential zone, so that is intended to be for apartments and other amenities. And then kind of behind that is our low-density residential zone, which is our single-family houses, typically the detached style, but you can see some attached or small townhome units kind of interspersed. And then along the south side is that dark purple line, which I didn't explicitly call out, which is our urban service boundary, and the green belt, which is the areas that are being proposed for C1. I've also included the quick info sheets, just kind of with quick blurbs about what you can do on the properties, what type of setbacks you'd be generally looking at. I would like to note that this is a PUD request, which is an option for some developers to take, where you can exchange accommodation or changes to your lot width, your lot sizes, those types of amenities, in exchange for added public amenity, public access points. So in this instance, they've chosen trails with the green belt, but other places can designate park areas, or having open space interspersed within a neighborhood, or those types of amenities. Very briefly, I also included the Payne's Depot Road Neighborhood Center, that's after all of the quick sheets, just talking about the area being an undeveloped parcel at the time of the comprehensive plan coming in, and that it has the potential to be used in a way that could be a benefit to the community in an effective and planned route going forward. Last items just include the green belt information and kind of what the intention of it, what the proposed realignment is. This does show the realigned green belt boundary. Previously, it was the 820 contour. We are working with the city to amend that to a more uniform boundary that allows for a more effective use of trails and other amenities that can be kind of put through the neighborhoods, and the uses that can go within that one. And then after that, it gets kind of into the annexation stuff, which I'm gonna step away from for right now. This came before the planning commission board in December of '24. After hearing and everything like that, the board did recommend in favor of that request, and now it is, after kind of working with them, to kind of finalize some last-minute items, or not last-minute items, but some conditions that we had put forth, they're coming before you guys for review and consideration and, as part of their public hearing. So, and I was kind of running through a lot of just mostly a packet, but if you guys have any specific questions about what is being shown, any of the zones that I kind of ran through, we can kind of go from there.
Mayor, if I could?
Mr. Stone?
How, how many times will this one change? Because Amerson Orchard is not what the plans look like. The plans changed dramatically. And what they were originally brought to the, because when the public service, police, fire, public works, when they met, I saw the plans, and they looked nothing like what it is now. There was minimal apartments that were put up, supposed to have been put up, now it's all apartments.
Yes.
How many times will this one change? Because, and I understand that having apartments in multifamily units is one of the things that is built in to planning and zoning, but any roadway that you come into Georgetown, you see apartments. It makes Georgetown look like a temporary city. Talk about, well, we want, invite people. There's no houses, all you see is townhomes and apartment buildings, so it just gives that impression. So is it gonna change? What's?
We have conditioned as part of their zone change request that they would be keeping consistent with their comprehensive plan as shown, so it would be the expectation that they would continue that going forward. However, I will hold and kind of speak on the matter as well.
Yeah, I really think that the important thing to, to keep in mind here, and the applicant can speak for their application, but there is a, a process that we're working through. And at the zone change process, the only thing that is required currently from planning and zoning is that concept plan. Now, as we've, as Elise just discussed, the idea is that the concept needs to be close enough for us to take actual items towards, and that's what we're doing here tonight. I will just reassure, though, that when it comes time for that development plan to be filed for, both preliminarily and then as a final development plan, that's another opportunity for review through planning and zoning. Now, again.
Yeah, I'll just echo that, and that I think that's what staff is, is good at, and that's their job, is when they see concept plans like this at the, the planning commission level, they know that this is a general representation of what the project will ultimately look like. And I think it'd be unfair if we came back with something that changes the landscape of this and looks totally different, and at that point, I would assume, and I would expect, that if that was the case, staff would recommend us for disapproval at the development plan stage. But I will tell you, the, the single-family lots is the first item that's gonna be taking place in development out there. That is a big key aspect of this project, so those will be coming in. I haven't seen any other designs or layouts. I think if there's gonna be changes to the concept plan you see, it'll be adds to dimensions and layouts, it won't be adds to the overall aspects of the development.
Okay, are there any other questions?
This might be a silly, this might be silly, silly question, just gonna phrase it. This is horse paddocks, so there's gonna be, I assume, real horses in paddocks, is that what we're saying?
Yes, that would be the ideal situation. Obviously, there are safety concerns with that with residences around there, but, I mean, this is right on the edge of rural Georgetown, Scott County, and so there are, Summer Wind is right to the edge of it, and so that's why the applicant, I think, has taken a, a good amount of time and done a good job of trying to buffer those areas. So there's a, a decent amount of space, a large amount of space between the residential and where those horse paddocks are shown. Likewise, there's the buffer area between where the residences are and Summer Wind Farm.
That's in city limits of Georgetown, right?
Well, with the annexation.
If it's annexed, then, but we can't have last stock in town.
Well, then that may be one of the items that changes, but I gotta look.
So right there may change your concept some.
Well, I mean, that project is already, I believe, already has a development plan approved for that lot. So that's already, that, that section of the, the project is already approved and has a full development plan. I don't have that in front of me today.
Without telling you that horses can be allowed in Georgetown?
I'd assume that we didn't get recommended for approval from staff if that was contrary to the ordinance, but I'll let them speak to the horse paddock issue.
All right, any other questions? All right, I guess at this time we need to read the.
Zone change, den, class, constructional property, standing for 178, eight, nine plus minus acres located at or around Payne's Depot Road, Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from A1 to B5, PUD, C1, R1C, PUD, and R3, PUD. Summary, one, rezones approximately 178.89 plus minus acres located at or around Payne's Depot Road, Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, Scott County PVA parcel number 141-20-088.001, and a portion of Scott County PVA parcel number 141-20-088.000, from A1 agricultural to B5, PUD, general commercial park, C1 conservation, R1C, PUD, single-family residential, and R3, PUD, high-density residential. Two, provides for repeal of inconsistent laws, severability of provisions, and an effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Publicly introduced and reviewed for the first time, February 24, 2025.
All right. Now, ready to do item B?
Okay, so this ordinance is relating to the annexation. You previously heard that there are two different parcels involved in this zone change. The zone change is contingent upon annexation of both of these parcels into city limits. This stems from the annexation policy related to the urban services, urban service boundary. The nature of this development and bringing it into the urban service area means that there's gonna be additional city, new city services and things that'll have to be provided based on that growth. So that's why we do require that these properties become part of the city, if that makes sense under the policy. Tonight, what you have before you, it's an ordinance, an ordinance annexing approximately 120 acres of the property, so the larger property, and if you could switch maps, this is gonna kind of help you see a little bit better where the current city limit is in the two different parcels we're talking about. This is 1530 Payne's Depot Road, which is kind of this bottom half of the map. I don't really know what shape it is, but you can kind of see there's like a rectangle, and then it kind of cuts down and goes back up north. That's the property that was annexed in last year with the distillery project. So right now, we're just talking about this lower piece here. The different colors on here, just so it's making sense in your mind, those are the three different zones that we, that we just discussed before. The parcel that we're not talking about specifically tonight is that kind of triangle in the upper left-hand corner. We anticipate bringing that ordinance to you all at the next meeting for a first reading, so they, we can have all this kind of working at the same time. But just remember, all this goes kind of hand in hand, so if the zone change doesn't pass, the annexation doesn't pass, there could be a scenario where this land comes in, but maybe the other does not. We'll work through that when the time comes, but for, for the purpose of tonight, we're just talking about the 120 acres on that bottom part of the map. So, are there any questions about that? It's a puzzle, we're piecing it together.
I have a question about that, it's maybe semantics, but why in the world are we doing annexations? We used to do annexations first, and then.
We used to do annexations first and then come back, do annexation at first and second reading, and then come back for a zone change at our first and second reading? Because like I said, if you don't annex it, there's no point in wasting our time talking about a zone change. So why do we do it like this seems backwards to me?
Well, my understanding is it's kind of a weird balance. This property where it's currently agricultural, my understanding is under the law, you really can't annex like land that has that agricultural designation. So with the zone chain process, being in the contingency that's put in place there, doing them concurrently just helps that along. So I'm not making sense.
No, you're not. Try again.
Well, I'll speak to the inherent basis of it. And I, it might have been this way before. I've been with the city almost eight years, and we've always brought annexations and zone changes together because that condition is always imposed upon.
Which I've always felt that was wrong to do that because because you're backing them side by side, because if you don't annex it, there's no zone change.
Yeah, and typically the the way it reads on the agenda is annexation, zone change. That is, that is true, but.
One, one issue that may present is you have two readings of your annexation. So that's going to be two months, which is about 60 days. So if you do two annexations and then on the third month, you have the first reading of zoning ordinance, that fourth reading will be on the 90 day period, which means zoning change automatically goes in per state law. So.
I think we, should we change that to, well, back in the day, we did any reading of an annexation, first reading of an annexation, then second reading of the annexation, then second reading of the annexation, were approval or not approval. And if it got approved, then we started talking, and that would have put it within your time frame.
That may just be a stylistic thing on your also.
Now it's like you're rushing, 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 and you don't even know really what's, I mean, that's, that's been talked about before, but then you don't even know what you're doing, and you're rushing both of them together. So yes, timetable you're on, timetable you're on because of money as well as the law, but there's no point talking annexation, there's no point talking zone change if you don't take care of annexation first. But that's my two cents worth, and so. Y'all know I'm not shy about saying it.
Thank you for the feedback. We will certainly look into that and make sure we have the best process moving forward.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Madam Clerk, will you read it?
An ordinance annexing into the city of Georgetown, certain real property containing approximately 120.38 plus or minus acres located at or around Payne's Depot Road, Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky. Summary, one, annexes into Georgetown city limits by written consent of the property owners in accordance with KRS 81A.412, approximately 120.38 plus or minus acres located at 1530 Payne's Depot Road, Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky. Scott County PVA parcel number 141-20-088.000. Two, provides for repeal of inconsistent law severability of provisions and an effective date upon passage and publication. Full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Publicly introduced and revved for the first time February 24, 2025.
All right. Next, we have item C, special events ordinance. Sponsors Willow, Hambrick, and Tammy Lesby Mitchell.
So same thing with this legislation, if the sponsors have anything they'd like to say before I start talking.
Like we've mentioned before, we've been talking with the police committee, we've talked with city clerk, we've talked with a lot of different entities, we've talked to citizens, and we feel like we've come up with a pretty good compromise, the businesses, but also to be able to have tourism bring in people in a welcoming invitational way. So this is a first read, and we we feel like we've done our due diligence. Tammy?
Yeah, I just wanted to say too that I'm glad Mr. Jesse came tonight because some of the things that you brought up when you were up speaking are actually addressed in in the ordinance that we're bringing forward. So we tried to hear what everyone said, and we spent a lot of time on this. So hope we got it right, and we can put this together and then move on.
So before we do the first reading, I just wanted to do a quick walkthrough just to highlight the areas that have been changed since we last talked about this. So and none of, none of this is set in stone. So as we have this discussion, you are still welcome to talk through this and make suggestions and just work through the details. Also, just as a reminder, this is an ordinance that can still be amended after it's passed. So there will be issues and and things that pop up that may not be fully covered here in this draft, but we can always amend it later and make it work for us. So if you'll go to the next slide. The first change, there was conversation of, you know, we have a special event, right? But there's conversation of what is a civic sponsored event versus just an event that's put on by a nonprofit or a private organization. So the first change that you'll see is the addition of a definition that defines a civic sponsored event. And that is a special event that's organized, operated, or funded in whole or in part by the city. Up here, we do have examples of what these events could look like. Right now, based on the conversation with you all and conversation with tourism, these are the civic sponsored events that we've identified. So this list right now seems pretty all inclusive. There could be future events that come up or that are developed over time. So this model just allows you to kind of explain what those events could be. Just want to explain why it was set up like that. Any questions on the definitions? If not, we'll go to the next slide. On this slide, this is, these are all the conditions that are self set forth for the application for a special event permit. On the left hand side and in the ordinance itself, there's several things that the applicant will have to provide in the application to give you all the information you need to make a decision. None of that has changed. What has changed is increasing the application fee from $50 to $75. Part of this was done due to some of the changes I'll talk about in a second. There's going to be additional staff time in this process of the intake and the review and the and the processing of these applications. The other change, and this is where we'll have a little bit of conversation, you'll see under subsection D, it says special events impacting, actually, I can look at it here. Special events impacting the public right of way and or public property in the city's downtown central business district shall be limited to no more than two permitted special events per month regardless of the number of applicants. The city council reserves the right to authorize additional permitted special events if such event would be in the public interest. So this came from the the request and the feedback to limit the number of times that, you know, initially talking about Main Street, but in the conversation and the way the traffic ordinance is written, it includes the downtown central business district. And if you go to the next slide, we'll go back and forth, but this is a map that shows what that district is. So this is an opportunity for you all. If you do want to make it Main Street specific, we can do that, but considering the fuller context of what we're operating in, the central business district includes more, it's the downtown area, it includes some of the residential areas, not just Main Street and the businesses located on Main Street. So there's a map of that just to show you kind of where that is targeted. So if you, if you'll go back to the other slide, are there any questions or concerns about the limitation or the the designation for the area? No? Okay. Two slides, please. Street closures, again, this talks about really the issue stemming from Main Street. The proposed language before you differentiates between closing city right of way versus state right of way. The changes here contemplate and acknowledge that the state right of way cannot be shut down completely for these special events. And it builds in a process where the applicant will work with the city clerk to apply for that encroachment permit from the state. So you don't have a situation where maybe the state authorizes a closure, you all don't authorize it, or vice versa, and it's just kind of confusing. We're trying to build in that closure process into this events, the application process to make sure that everything's cohesive. I'll come back to that one in a second. The other component that is new, subsection C on here, it says to minimize disruption to public access during daytime hours, set up and breakdown activities for a permitted special event impacting public rights of way in the city's downtown central business district shall not commence before 5:00 PM on the date of event, of the event unless an exception is granted by the city council. If a special event is permitted during morning hours, everything must be removed by 9:00 AM on the date of the event, allowing normal pedestrian or vehicular traffic to resume after the event unless an exemption, sorry, exception is granted by the council. This contemplates Main Street or a city right of way won't be closed in times where you have high traffic or you, you have people that are needing to access those roads to get through town. This puts the applicants on notice at their events and the setup. It also puts staff who would maybe be supporting these events on notice that the time that you can close it and set up is 5:00 PM for the evening. And for morning events, the expectation is everything is freed up by 9:00 AM. Any questions on that?
I think this is important because I think it does put responsibility on us to make sure that if we have an event, the setup can't start before 5:00. That's what this, that's what this is saying. It's not saying, oh, we can set it up at 3:00 and the event starts at 5:00. This is, to my knowledge, the setup is at, is at 5:00. And so I think that will take, that will take the communication. As we get to that portion of this, it'll become a little bit easier to understand when people have to have their cars out of there and when exactly the the road closure is going to happen.
Can you, if I can ask a question? Lori?
Just a minute.
Oh, good. No, okay. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, Lori. Now, come on.
Yes, sir.
Use the pavilion down there. How much does that cost?
$2.50 for nonprofits, $500 for profit.
Okay. How much is it going to cost us to, cost somebody to get Main Street to $70? Is that correct?
Yes.
If I could speak to that a little bit, the pavilion, there is a, from my understanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, please, there is a interlocal agreement that is being developed between tourism, the city, and the county. And Devin, would you like to speak to that?
Speak to that, Devin. So that interlocal agreement has been entered into. So I know that the conversations we're having right now are similar but different, and they impact each other. We can provide an updated copy. The last council adopted that interlocal agreement with tourism and the county. And in that agreement, one of the responsibilities of tourism is to manage the rentals and events scheduled there. But another part of that interlocal, and I know Lori and her commission have kind of developed this process, but also in the interlocal, there's a component that the city and county have, have to approve the application so that, you know, the city and county still have say over that process in some ways. So I know, you know, Lori's been put on the spot, like, what's your plan? What's your plan to to administer this and what are you going to charge? But ultimately, that agreement still puts the safeguards in place that bring the city and county back to the table. So I know that question keeps coming up, so we'll, we'll circulate that interlocal agreement. And obviously, every interlocal is subject to amendment, so if there's something that the council sees is room for improvement, those other, you know, partners can come to the table with us and talk about how it could be amended if there are concerns about that. So I know the concern is, you know, we have an application fee that's designed only to cover, recover the cost of administering the application. So we, we said, Tracy, what are the hours required of you? What are the hours required of all of us to cover that, not to generate revenue? So that's where we do need to have that conversation more. So all that to say, the interlocal agreement still governs that process, and there still has to be that approval mechanism. So that, that has not happened yet, as you, as you know.
No, my question is, $500 to rent that down there, $75 to come up here and block Main Street. Where's the logic?
No.
If we're trying to keep people from shutting down Main Street and push them to this new pavilion, or push them to go to the county park, we're not doing a good job with that because we're only putting $75.
Well, and the reason for putting the $75 is it's a, it's a regi, it's an application fee, and that fee cannot, it, it would be, have to be coined as a tax if we were generating revenue off of it aside from what we were expending. So that's why I say that, and I'm not trying to, to say that, no, you can't have that fee because it's not my decision, but all I'm saying is that is still subject to approval. So there's more conversation to be had on that topic.
And part of the, if I could, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Part of the discussion that we had on the fee, which I think we've alluded to in the past, is that I don't know of any closure that's taken place that hasn't gone to a nonprofit. And so even the car shows that have been subject of great discussion. And so what we didn't want to do is to make it such that we would be taking more than the processing. The reason why we went from 50 to 75 was because now there is an extra onus to be able to get the the state involved with it. The applicant has to now make sure, because it's a state road, that they work with the city clerk in order to get that organized, and that'll be extra processing time. But I was surprised at the last meeting to find out that there was a $2.50 and $500 charge. We had not heard that, at least I hadn't heard it. I don't know that Tammy had heard it. Had anybody else on council heard it before the last meeting?
Yes.
You had?
I had a conversation.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I hadn't heard the numbers. I knew that there was conversation, but I had, I had not heard, and I'm not sure that it's totally been decided. Has it been voted on at the interlocal? Is it, is it?
Under the agreement, the application is, it's approved by the city and the county. So no, that unless something happened in a vacuum without me, your commission might have approved it, but it's still, under the agreement, has to come to the bodies for, the the actual application has to come to the bodies for approval.
So that, if that's a point of contention, it can be looked at.
Todd, if Todd's interested, he can make an amendment to do it, and then you'll get a second, and then vote on it, with the council vote on it and do it. And say yes or no, and have the council vote to amend it for it or against it.
And if I may, I did look up today and see what the average cost is for permits for shutting down a major roadway in other cities, and they do range between 100 and 500. So it does make sense to have, look into it a little bit more. That way, people won't think Georgetown is the bargain basement, you know, discount, let's get Main Street for, you know, big lots prices or whatnot. Well, you know, so, so somewhere between 100 and 500 might be something to explore.
Well, you do have an inconsistency, or at least I think there's an inconsistency in there with what you were just talking about. Because Lori, Lori said there's, could be private down there. Well, we know most of it's nonprofit, but there could be private down there, but then on page nine, you got no commercial use of municipal parking lot, and that's a municipal parking lot, even though we're calling it a pavilion. And then we have in our events, that's on page six, number 10, nothing can be held purely for private profit. So with that, you can't have anything but nonprofits because you can't have anything for private profit. And then we can't have, if this is, if that stays in there, no commercial use of municipal parking lot. So if it's a private, that's commercial, that's commercial use of municipal parking lot. So that has to be taken out of there, an amendment out of there.
It, it does actually say that special events are approved by the city. So if you, if you ever had a private event like that, if they came through this special event process and it was approved, that prohibition is, it's an exception to that prohibition. They have permission to be there.
So they have permission to be there?
Yep. If it goes through that, if it's an approved special event through that process.
If I may as well, when we heard last, at the last meeting, that was, we were treating the pavilion as part of this ordinance. And when last meeting, when we heard that, we backed away from that somewhat because there, it is governed by the, by tourism, the county, and the city, and not just the city. So you won't see that part referred to in the ordinance.
In this ordinance.
We, we backed away from making any rules there because it is, we, we found out that this was already in place. And, and I do have a quick question. Are we charging a $50 fee now? Okay, so when we, when we're saying that we're. Okay, so when we, when we're saying that we're changing it from fifty to seventy-five?
It's just based on our talk.
We're not charging fifty now.
Right.
We're char-, we're changing it from zero to seventy-five because we're not charging fifty now.
It was in the draft that I read.
Right.
Of the eleven points where it said fifty, so that's where the change is.
Right.
Fifty to seventy-five.
All right. So, so just point of clarification, then, are we talking about the business district that this applies to, which would include the pavilion?
And maybe it needs to say the business district minus.
Minus the pavilion.
The pavilion. Because there seems to be a set of rules that applies there because all three entities are included.
Yeah, because on page nine, there shall be no commercial use of municipal parking lots. There shall be no commercial. So that would mean the farmer's market couldn't be back here because they are businesses making a profit from selling their goods. So that language might be, need to change or reflect a little bit differently.
Would you like to make that amendment?
I'd make the amendment that that, that language needs to be changed.
That.
Because that's, anything that you're gonna put that's for profit, anything that's going down there that's for profit, that section of that does not seem to fit that. You might even have a commercial truck sitting down there for, in the parking lot that has logos all over the side of it, and they may have left it for three or four days. Are they not advertising their product because they're commercial, so, but yeah, they just needed to sit there for, or they're connected to a business? So that lends itself that it could create problems, that it needs to be changed a little differently than that.
Um, would you be able to check? You said that it says unless authorized.
So the, the commercial use language, this is already existing law.
Right.
This was an attempt to clarify with the special events, um, the, the exception there because before it was just civic events. So I'm happy to, um, drive language and circulate that to you, um, to consider. It may, depending on how big of a change that is, that is a change that might require another first reading. And if we have to work through that, we will, but I'm happy to take a stab at that.
It seems like, and I haven't read it in detail though, so I can't, I can't go into detail, but that one just jumped out at me. But it seems like some of it is inconsistent with it. Some of the language is inconsistent, but now that you say some of this is new, some of this is old, that makes sense that why it might be inconsistent.
Yeah. Yes, and I guess I should clarify, um, just reading a, an ordinance like this, um, the special event portion, that is brand-new language, so that is written in a way that it's totally new. So that's just kind of written plain. The sections two, three, and four, those have bold and underline, which means it's new. And then there's also maybe some strike-throughs, which shows that's being like deleted and replaced. So that, that's how you differentiate some of those things. So section one is entirely new. Section two, three, and four, because of the addition and the creation of, this potential creation of this new ordinance, these are other ordinances that we already have in place that are gonna be impacted by the new law. So that, that's why that is coming up.
Okay, that's why I'm seeing it looks inconsistent at some points.
Okay. So we can work through that, and that's where, this is not perfect, we're gonna have to work through it, and, um, it's, it's good to get that feedback and have the extra eyes because what makes sense to me may not make the same sense to you all, so.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I can. So, just so I can wrap my head around this, if they go to the county park, they've gotta pay a minimum of two hundred dollars to get the county park. That's just the park itself. If they go down to the bottom of the hill to the pavilion, which has nothing to do with this, it's a minimum two hundred and fifty dollars. Or they can come here for seventy-five dollars, get Main Street. And the one thing that we're arguing over is the shutting of Main Street down, but yet nobody is, I don't know, maybe, I need to make a, uh, to amend this, a motion to amend this, that add a five hundred dollar deposit. And if the city services, uh, do not go over that five hundred dollars, they get a refund. If it goes, um, over that, then they're, they're issued a bill. Uh, and I think we can adjust it for nonprofits and they can do two hundred and fifty, but I just, you know, we've heard so much over the past that, you know, we've gotta find revenue streams, we've gotta find revenue streams, but yet here we are giving away city services, just, here it is, take it, you know? I, I don't get it. It doesn't make sense.
Would you like to amend it?
I just made the motion.
Oh, I, I don't know whether you said maybe. You said maybe.
No, I just made the motion.
Okay.
Repeat, repeat it.
Repeat it, yeah.
Make the motion.
Okay.
That we amend this to add a five hundred dollar deposit for non-, or for, um, for profit, two hundred and fifty dollar deposit for nonprofits. If they go over that amount, we send them a bill. They go, and under that amount, they get a refund.
If you recall the, the previous version, that is what was in that document.
Right.
Was the five hundred dollar, um, deposit structure. So you have seen that language before.
Yeah.
Just as a reminder.
Yeah.
And that is essentially what it would look like. So you have a motion?
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that.
So a motion is made by Mr. Stone to add these additions to amendment, to add two hundred and fifty for.
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit and five hundred for, for profit. And it was seconded by, by Ms. Hambrik. So are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise.
Aye. Opposed, next.
Okay, I will make that change and that is a substantive change, so we will definitely be having another first reading on this ordinance, but I'll circulate that to you, um, before the next meeting.
Yeah.
Um, all right, um, can you go to the next slide? All right, so we had talked about, um, the increase in the application fee, um, just pointing out that under the standards for issuance, so earlier we talked about kind of the standards the applicant will have to meet in applying. This section carves out more in order to get the permit, or for you all to be comfortable and say, conditions have been met, we're gonna issue this, this permit. These are kind of the standards. So just updating that dollar amount to match the change earlier in the ordinance. And then related to the street closure, um, adding in that as a condition of approval, whenever, when the event has to do with a state, um, a state road or a state right-of-way, um, one of the conditions of approval is that, um, the transportation cabinet will have to also sign off on that, um, and issue that encroachment permit. So if the state says no, it is a condition of approval that you all are imposing on it, that the state says no, then the event's not gonna happen because that condition hasn't been satisfied. If the state signs off and they say, yep, we can close the road that day, then that condition's met and it would proceed. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next slide. Um, and then the last change to add, there was a request to build in some reporting from, um, the city clerk's office and staff to you all. So what's been added is, um, honor before January thirty-first of each calendar year, we're looking at this on a calendar year basis because that's kind of easier. We can adjust it to a fiscal year if you want to. But honor before January thirty-first of each calendar year, the city clerk shall prepare and submit to the council an annual report summarizing the permitted special events in the previous calendar year. That report shall include information about the cost of city services to support each event and recommended changes to, um, essentially the special events ordinance based on that, the contents of that report and kind of just the, what we learned from the year before. Um, if you'll read above that, there's a section that basically tasks the city clerk, um, with the ability to enforce this ordinance, but to also, um, essentially, um, build, subject to your all's approval, um, rules and regulations in the form of a policy that can help supplement and support this ordinance. Um, so what that could mean is here, for example, the city clerk knows an annual report is required. It's not called out in this ordinance, but it could be a policy that she's working with staff and that staff will provide information to her. It could be monthly, it could be quarterly, however that's generated, so that we're getting information in real time. But as far as the reporting to you all, you will at least once a year get that kind of fuller picture thing. Does that make sense? On that same topic, um, a couple of things that are not addressed in this current ordinance, but people have talked about. One is communication related to these events. If you look through the ordinance, it's built in in a few places. One, the applicant, as part of their application, has to provide a, um, essentially a communication plan for how they, they as the applicant event organizer, plan to market and inform, um, the affected area about their event in the two weeks leading up to the event. Um, there's also a requirement built in for notice to, um, that they're required to, to notify the, um, property owners and the business owners that will be directly impacted by the event in that vicinity. I, I mentioned this now because through the ability for the clerk's office to build these kind of policies, when you look at the, the big picture of communication related to these events, there's a lot of factors that come into play. We have, um, resources the city can use. We've talked about social media, we've talked about the website, we've talked about mailing letters, that sort of thing. We've also talked about partnering with the newspaper, we've talked about partnering with tourism. A policy that kind of sets forth the communication plan and what would be required for events can be used to supplement this ordinance, and that will be easier for you all to update if changes are needed, um, because you could bring it to you all and you could, you could pass it at that time versus having two separate readings and actually amending the ordinance. There are many cities that take this approach where there's actually, uh, a special ordinance policy that goes along with the ordinance. And so in that communication plan concept, you could have a sample that shows, this is what we expect for a notification letter. This is how early we expect it to go out. Here are what the, here's what the city will do when it comes to communication versus what is expected of you as the applicant. Those sorts of details that while they can go in the ordinance, I'm not saying they can't, um, it, it just is a lot to work through and just having that separate area to focus on those is something that a lot of cities do. So I just wanted to present that and call that out. Any questions on that before I kind of switch to a different topic?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just, just one question. So did that also include any residents that would be in the impacted area as well?
Um, so I'm, under the notice, the notice section, um, I've, if you're willing to, I would recommend making a motion to amend that language to clarify that residents would be included in that.
I would make that motion.
Okay, motion is made to clarify the communication plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
To clarify, the, the motion is to add, if I can read the.
Okay, please do.
Give me one second to pull it up here. So it currently reads, the permittee, permittee shall be required to specifically inform private property and business owners who might be inconvenienced during the permitted special event. The motion would be that it reads, um, the permittee shall be required to specifically inform private property, private property owners, or sorry, private property and business owners and residents, um, who might be inconvenienced. So we can still work through that language, but that is the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, so that was the motion made here, and the second was made by, by Ms. Mitchell. Uh, are there further comments and or questions?
I would just say that, um, we have a policy in place, I think, where we do that already.
Um, but it is, it's good to have it in there where they put the signs up on the posts and all. It's, it's done for the residents, but it, it, it does need to be codified, so that's a good point.
Are there any other questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise. Directly reflect that, that will be amended.
Now, I want to clarify, that section we're talking about is the responsibility of the person that's actually putting on the event. Public Works, they do put up signs in these areas, put people on notice, so just want to clarify, that is different. Um, the other thing that's been talked about that's not specifically addressed in this ordinance is related to, um, food trucks, um, specifically during events that are, um, on Main Street. My recommendation to you all, um, food trucks or mobile food vending, there are, uh, it's a complex thing. It's a, it's a business model, um, that just requires different, a different level of attention and have different issues than an events ordinance ha- has. So my recommendation is, if you want to tackle food trucks, um, my recommendation is to consider food trucks and where those could be located and what types of regulations would apply to food trucks, to include that separate from this events ordinance. However, kind of along the same conversation of using the city clerk's office, you could put together a policy related to events that could dictate based on safety, um, that sort of electricity, things like that, to dictate where in these events you could tackle some of the issues that come up with food trucks, I guess. And this is specifically on Main Street. Does that make sense? Considering that kind of outside the scope of the event ordinance.
When, when we talked about this, um, we were given of, of an instance where the food trucks had sued the city of Louisville, and, um, we, we thought that we could address this outside of the ordinance in a policy section. And, and it seems like after Lori spoke last meeting, that there are several things that she tries to do in order, and maybe we put those in writing so that it doesn't appear, you know, that it's very consistent, but that it doesn't need to be a part of the ordinance to invite scrutiny where someone may have litigation, that it more likely to be addressed in a policy section that goes along with that, if that makes sense. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the, in, in the city of Louisville lost, um, when the business owners did not want the food trucks, according to the article that, that you gave us, um, uh, it wasn't a monetary, um, loss, but.
There was a.
I think there was a five-year moratorium or something where the, go ahead and explain.
There was a, it's called a consent decree. You hear it more related to like, um, environmental.
Right.
Issues, but basically, um, and theirs was, what their ordinance was, was different, but it was related to food trucks. And basically, um, there, they had a, I forget what it's called, but like a proximity ban on food trucks to brick and mortar restaurants, and it's essentially a discrimination, um, name where you're discriminating based on the type of business. And what ended up happening, Louisville had a five-year consent decree put in place that kept them from enforcing their ordinance and the regulations related to that issue specifically. So the recommendation here isn't to say that, you know, if we did this, absolutely you would get challenged on it. The recommendation is just to make sure that if we're gonna tackle food trucks, that we can kind of take that holistic approach and use zoning, um, and some, some other, um, components outside the scope of this event, uh, events ordinance, to just make sure that we tackle that issue properly and that it's the best fit, not only for Main Street, but the community, if that makes sense.
Because it was our desire not to have food trucks in front of restaurants.
But it was, and, and it is, I think.
It's still our desire.
It's tourism's desire to do that as well. And, and we learned of the different things that Lori goes through and the exceptions that are, that have taken place. And, and another thing that did come up is that like, for instance, with Festival of the Horse, if you have a little, a booth that's selling sweaters or jewelry and you put it in front of a boutique, that's not different than putting a food truck in front of a restaurant. I mean, it's, it's a competitor that's right in front. And so, you know, we have, we have unwritten policies right now in place, and we felt like we. and we felt like we could tackle this situation, which is absolutely something that we don't want to happen through the policies and not in the ordinance.
Go ahead.
Doing it through a policy, is that, is that enforceable outside of the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
So we wouldn't, I mean, you're saying a policy and not an ordinance on, on food trucks itself?
No, I'm saying you could set a policy that addresses how food trucks are, or I guess vendors during these events. You can use the policy to dictate your directive on your preference for how. So my understanding currently, and Lori, I don't know if you can help, but my understanding, for example, with Festival of the Horse, the businesses are offered the first opportunity for the space in front of their venues. From there, there are other factors that drive what vendors could come in. So for food trucks, just for example, last meeting we talked about how they have electrical needs. And we've learned that there might be a prob, not a problem, but an issue with where those outlets are on Main Street that those trucks can actually plug into. Is that accurate? I don't want to misspeak.
No, that's correct.
Okay, so what I'm saying is we could work as the city to develop a policy that kind of dictates the layout, some of these factors that complements the ordinance, which is the law. Does that make sense?
Any other questions? All right.
Okay, so I've noted four changes, at least four changes. It's first reading, so.
I do have one more question. On page three, it's under, this might be old, not new, but it's under a special event permit application shall be completed, submitted to the city clerk treasurer's office no sooner than ninety days, or later than thirty. So he was in here. So don't forget all this when it comes to us already, isn't all that already compiled? Don't you receive all that already because we ask for insurance and everything?
My, under, this recommendation was created because there are a couple of issues that were identified based on last year. And one of the issues, and I'm going to, I'm going to kind of stair step this. The first issue was you were getting applications in late, in early spring or late winter for events and fall or early winter later in the year. So in an attempt to lock, just be considerate of these events and making decisions more in real time, that's why that window was put, the application window, just to help dial in on that. That was also responsive to some of the insurance-related questions that we had, where people claim that they can't get insurance policies written without your all's approval. That led to some of the changes in the ordinance, and this is where the insurance came up earlier today. Right now, our application requires insurance to be provided. I don't think insurance is being prov, or at least a certificate of insurance or if the policy is being provided with the application at that point in time. What we're asking is that when you apply for an event, we did work, work with our risk manager to work through some of this language, but basically you need to provide a copy of your declarations page or your policy exclusions. That showing what you can and cannot be insured for, that gives us a chance to compare that with our insurance policy and either make recommendations for additional, additional coverage they may need. And then two, they'll also be, one of the requirements is they have to verify and acknowledge that proof of adequate insurance coverage has to be provided prior to the start of the event. So the way this is contemplated is if you have a situation where maybe someone cannot, they claim they cannot have that insurance document in place right now, it's setting up the opportunity, you know, you're on notice that you will have to provide insurance before you can have your event. It's one of those conditions of approval. So they say, here's what we could get coverage for. For example, Lori at the last meeting had her policy that's kind of covering the last fiscal year. That's great, but if there's an event in the new fiscal year, she would have to provide that updated insurance prior to that event in order to have the event.
Okay, so like he came tonight asking for the Finley 5K, not until August. It's not, it's not for us to approve or not to prove it. We can go on and approve it early. But because that's, that's more, that's early. If we had approved it tonight, it'd been more than the ninety days. But Tracy has to have, has to have the insurance, the application, everything wrapped up in a neat little bow before thirty days, between ninety and thirty days. Is that correct? That's not them asking.
Actually, we were trying to address a certain group that came in and tried to tie up seven or eight dates throughout the year.
But then you've knocked out Finley 5K and you've knocked out everything that we just violated, everything that we said to Lori, unless this is just a housekeeping, internal housekeeping.
Any events that you have approved today will not be affected by the changes you make?
But if we were doing it according to for the next year, then how do we handle that ninety days?
So the applicants or future event organizers, I mean, they're just on notice that you can't, the expectation is, you know, maybe three months before your event?
Which is hard for them to plan a, it's hard for them to plan the event out, not giving somebody, just like he said, I mean, he was a great example of that because that's just what he said tonight. He felt pressured, kind of, I could feel, he kind of felt pressured that we were cutting in on his time by making him come back.
That was exactly his point.
And we're, he still, he didn't need to come down till May. So that, that timeline's not going to work for a lot of people's events, to only give them ninety days.
This is open to you all to adjust as you see fit.
Okay, well, I mean, at least we have to give six, at least six months out. And Lori just grimaced, I think that was the wrong answer. So.
It's a, it's a, it's a delicate balance that we're, that we're trying to do. And I, I fully agree with you that we are locking things in with the ninety days, but if we go out too far, it's not good either.
Would they not cut out some other people? If you take it out, following that, you lock people, other people out of the loop that maybe want to do something later on, like your family.
Maybe ninety days is not enough.
If you want, you could remove that kind of that front window, and you could just build it on the back end so that you're not rushed or getting last minute events. You could keep that thirty day, at least thirty days out. So if you're not rushing to push an event through this process, that's something you could consider. Or you consider just losing the window.
Here's what I would say about that. Definitely whatever anybody wants. But what came up in the discussion that made us even look at this was when we were talking earlier, we had, we had someone who, who's already come in here once and asked for four events. Okay, the, the same person asked for four events to tie it through the rest of the year. And our discussion, when we were talking about this, was that we did not, last time, last year, I think it was seven, seven dates that they had.
It was.
And so we were trying to, we were trying to address that. So maybe we got overzealous and put, you know, you, you, you have to come for every single event. I think that needs to stay in there. Now, if you say that they can come and bring seven events or four events, you know, as long as they're within six months or whatever the date is, or maybe you change it to say, for instance, I know that tourism is going to come and say, we want the, in January, they're going to ask for the Christmas parade and the Fourth of July parade and the, all that is always the same time, the Martin Luther King March. It's always the same, and certainly we don't want them to wait and lose their spot if someone comes in front of them. So however, that needs to be worded. You know what the intent was, and so tell us how it needs to be worded and we'll change it.
Oh, thanks. Well, I think you need to give the average individual more time than ninety days, because ninety days you can't plan, you can't plan a wedding in ninety days. So you need more time to plan something that you're going to do with that. So at least take it out to six months for, for that part of it. But, you know, Lori is a different animal. Sorry, Lori. She is a di, she is different than the rest of us, so, rest of the, that come to us. So maybe you need to, to put a language in here that just affects the events that she brings to us. And then talk about the general events in another, but I do think you need to give people more than ninety days to plan their event. Because if they come up here and we say, no, I'm sorry, you can't do it, then they've got, they can't change their advertising, they can't change the publicity and all that in time to, to get it done. So I think it needs to be a little bit more than that. But Lori's a unique animal, and so she could be carved out, tourism could be carved out. And it comes out, and we always know the Fourth of July is always going to be the Fourth of July. Put that one in there too. And, but change it, and I don't know what the language is, that's your legalese job, but change it so you have that as one, one caveat. And then put the other caveat for the general people that come up here to be.
So a distinction for civic sponsored versus just the non-civic sponsored?
Yeah. Is it tourism events, is that what we're calling?
We're calling them civic sponsored.
Civic sponsored.
Okay, all right, so that, that's different. We, we could plan out the calendar, at first of January, she could come up here, we could probably plan the calendar out for her for that whole year and have that taken care of. And then everybody else needs to come at another time, but I think they need more time than ninety days. At least give them four months, five months, whatever they want to do, but.
So you're saying there'll be an exception when you talk about civic events, whether it be city-run events, there will be some different,
Different.
Different than what we have with somebody else. Anybody else come to the table?
Right, give her her own point, give her, so she's not falling under that.
And let her also include the Martin Luther King March if Juneteenth wants to bring an event. If, you know, the events that she works with, I think.
And it could be, I mean, if you really want to, if you want to solve it up into an ordinance, we know the last several years what Lori has done, those events that are given. And we just list those events as the given that they'll be permitted or whatever. With council approval, that they'll be permitted on this weekend, because you always do the, you always do everything on the same weekend. The dates change because of how it falls, but it's the same weekend. So you can put that in there as just that, have it there so you're taken care of. We don't have to work, we don't have the confusion between you and whoever.
Based on this discussion, would it be good for you to send out in the next, before the next meeting, so that we can have a first reading at the next meeting, would it be good in the next few days to send out better language there that would give more time? Because I think, I think we've seen the need for that, but also the carve-out. Is that possible to do without having to make, because I don't think we have quite the wording to do a, a motion change right now. Exactly, but if you have it in your mind and you have a clear motion to make, I'd be glad to second it, because I know what you're trying to say.
I don't know if it's completely clear, but I'll make it in two motions.
Okay.
I think. One is to tourism slash city-sponsored events will have their own timetable and be listed as the weekend that they will be and can be requested all at one time.
Can I ask?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Maybe you say what the, the language is and say this excludes tourism and city-sponsored events. And then you don't have to put in all that other stuff. That applies only to people that are not tourist, tourism or city-sponsored events.
I'd like to say anything Lori's in charge of, but that, that, that won't ring right for an ordinance, but.
It's, well, it's tourism events.
I think the word you're looking for, it would be civic, civic sponsored events.
Okay. Does that, does that make sense, Karen, and you don't have to line out everything that Lori needs to do, it may change.
I'm not, I'm not, that I don't really care that much, so I just, I just need it in there. So, all right, so tourism and city-sponsored events are not applicable to the other, other thing. Your, your legalese are not applicable to the other permit applications.
I'll second that.
An exempt, we're talking about an exempt into the, this.
They're exempt from the ninety or whatever y'all decide, sixty? Maybe, and as Emily mentioned earlier, maybe we don't even need a front end on it. It's just, I don't know. Do you think we need a front-end date on it? Or do you think it's all right for Finley 5K to come in January? I mean, maybe we take, we've taken care of what we were trying to do by saying you have to come, you have to present each date. And, and you can't come and say, I want these seven dates, or these four.
I don't mind, I don't, I don't mind that there's a date, a date in there to kind of organize it. I don't mind that you put a date in there. I just don't think three months is enough to organize most events. I think you need sixty, at least sixty. Let's just sponsor, yeah.
Now I understand that that would be important.
Yeah, uh huh, yeah. So I'll, I'll make a motion to change that to a special event permit application shall be completed, submitted to the city clerk office no sooner than six months prior to event, or later than thirty days prior to proposed, you know that.
All right. So, okay, so we got the motion.
And the second part, oh, you're going to make a second motion?
No.
No, that's.
That was it, so I, so.
Oh, I guess we really had to vote on first motion and second motion. Thank you, Tammy.
Just, it, it, it needs to say that it excludes. And it, and so you, that's part of it, right?
We'll put it together, that's part of it. You got that?
So now we got it, so you have it where we can, you kind of idea what would it sound like, or the motion, so.
The motion is to amend the
So people will know.
Give me, give me one second.
Thank you.
Motion is to amend the language so that it reads, "A special event permit application shall be completed and submitted to the city clerk's office no sooner than six months or however many days that is, and no later than thirty days prior to the proposed special event." And then there will also be an addition that clarifies that civic-sponsored events are accepted from that window.
You got it.
All right, now we have a motion made and we are properly accepted by Ms. Brent. Are there further questions and or comments?
Yes. So we've been working on this and we've changed it multiple times. I, I, I think Willow's original suggestion of gathering all these changes, going back seeing it again and doing it at our next opportunity would, would be a better use of time and a cleaner and more productive final product. Just my two cents.
Well, I think you've actually, you actually have, there's enough changes to it, there's substantial changes, so you really, you can't vote on this vote. You really made substantial changes to it, so it has to come back to a first reading.
So first reading hopefully next time with the changes.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussions?
So do we need to vote?
On Karen's.
So we either need to vote or it's a motion to withdraw.
You're voting on my amendment.
Yes, correct. So we have
First and second.
We have a motion made and properly seconded. Are there any other questions and or comments? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. All opposed say likewise?
No.
So right now, there are at least two motions that have been approved by you all that will absolutely be changed. I've got a couple of notes for some other areas, so it's very important because time is, time matters here. Our next meeting is on March tenth. If we back it up, there's going to be a really tight turnaround on this. So it's very, very important that if you have other changes or questions or things that you want to see, I need you to send that to me, like, as soon as you can, so that I can circulate this draft and get out there and we can have, have like clarifying, you know, if you send this to me, I can say, Tammy or, or Sandra, is this what you're aiming for? So then on the tenth, I will bring back a new ordinance that reflects these things. And we'll have another first reading. No?
Wasn't the motion to make the changes?
Yeah.
What I'm saying is there's two of them that have absolutely been changed. It sounds like there's some other maybe questions or areas that you all are wanting to change? Is that not right? Okay, at the next meeting, there'll be a new ordinance that at least has two of the changes that you all voted on and approved tonight. Okay? Okay?
So we're not doing the first reading of a changed ordinance?
It's changed way too much to.
And
that, that wasn't part of the motion. So that's why I'm asking for clarification. Otherwise I would have. Otherwise, I would have agreed.
Alright.
Are there any other comments or questions on this?
You really asked that question, did you?
I did, I do have one question, just while we're talking about it. Do you want to, so I, I mentioned that we're talking about this downtown central business district versus Main Street. Are you wanting to make, are you fine with leaving it as the district? Or do you want to make an amendment that dials in, or like focuses on Main Street?
Business district.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Emily.
Thank you for all your work in.
Alright, next we have the budget amendment ordinance sponsors of Greg Hampton and Tammy Leslie Mitchell.
Alright, good evening. Um, before we get into the first reading and I walk through this, just want to say, as we gear up, obviously we have some new and returning council members. As we gear up for this next budget season, you know, we've received some feedback, Devin, the mayor and I will be looking at, you know, how we go about our budget preparation process, how that's presented. Uh, obviously, budget amendments are part of that process throughout the year, so if anyone else has any feedback about in format changes or things you would like to see when budget amendments are presented, please let us know. Uh, we'll consider that as we move forward. Um, obviously, this is in the format that I typically provide, and just a feedback for a couple of our new council members. With our budget, there is a two thousand and five ordinance that governs the preparation and budget administration process. And it dictates that any major changes have to be done by ordinance, which requires two readings. So me and the departments, for example, can't move more than ten thousand dollars between the line items in their budgets without an amendment. Uh, and then the mayor can't either, those have to go, um, be approved by council because you set the budget initially, and then he administers. Um, so this budget amendment, typically, we try to do three per year. Um, obviously, when we're adopting the budget, uh, it's presented in early May, drafted into an ordinance. We have first and second reading, so typically, the data that we have at the time the budget is presented and drafted, we have ten months worth of that most recent year's data. So just so you know, that's how it is. So the first amendment of the year, it's typically a cleanup amendment to try to address some things that have happened. The mid-year amendment is where we typically try to catch the major changes. Uh, we look at our revenues and see if there are any changes that need to be made there. We look at the, uh, line items in the departmental budgets to see if we under, over projected any items. And then we also tell departments, if there were any requests you made in the original budget that didn't get approved, the mid-year budget is when you have the opportunity to make those requests. So this is definitely the big budget amendment of the year, and then we typically do another one in June that catches anything else between that. Again, it's an ordinance process that takes two votes, so we try to condense that down to three per year, but welcome to any feedback you have. You had a packet, I'm sorry, a memo in your packet regarding the budget amendment. But I am going to walk through those new changes and requests tonight. Typically, I do not go through the previously approved transactions in detail. Those are items that were approved either by the previous council or by you all in the first couple of meetings of the year. Uh, where possible, I try to list the misport order resolution or other document that council approved for those. So I will go through the new requests at this time. So the first thing is, we had some various revenues that we went over in finance committee. Property taxes was the biggest one at seventy-seven thousand. Um, I apologize, I did not bring that sheet with me today. There was another one that had about eighty thousand and a few other minor ones, so we had, these were revenue accounts where we had already exceeded the budget. So we're only increasing the budget to what we'd actually collected through, uh, late January, early February. And that was a hundred and sixty-six thousand. Our payroll withholding revenue, we'll talk about this more in the quarterly financial report. Uh, we, again, when we're developing our budget, we have ten months with payroll taxes, about three quarters worth of data. And we are increasing the budget on payroll tax withholding from eighteen point five to nineteen point two million, that's seven hundred thousand. That is bringing it up to where we, what we collected at the end of June thirty twenty-four. Uh, insurance proceeds, obviously, the prior council approved the purchase of a new engine uh, to update the fire department fleet. Just wanted to go ahead and include, and so you see that we had forty thousand in insurance proceeds from the wrecked vehicle that was totaled out. So, just so you can see that in relation to what was approved. And investment income, looked at what we've received, we were, been able to keep that twenty million dollar CD rolling over every thirty days, we've been able to keep that a little bit longer than anticipated. So, uh, able to increase investment income by about five hundred thousand. Uh, we, with our medical plan, we are what's called partially self-insured. So we don't pay our claims to the company, and then they take it and they take on the risk. We take on the risk of our medical claims, so we budget based on staffing and what we have. We put that into the plan, we had a bad claims year, so we need to refund that medical self-insurance fund by about five hundred thousand. We do expect those claims to improve. There were some things put in place during our last renewal, especially with our pharmacy benefit to help reduce that. Uh, Megan and I saw a presentation that that is already saving quite a bit of money, even though we only have one month of data on it. So we do anticipate that to look forward, and we continue to look for ways to improve as, as much as we can, because obviously costs for medical claims go up. Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
On the, uh, medical claims, do we, do we have a stop-loss coverage?
We do, yes, I believe it is individually, it is eighty thousand on each claim aggregate.
Aggregate, okay.
One million aggregate.
Okay.
So if any individual has a claim that goes above eighty thousand dollars, we have stop-loss insurance coverage. Of course, if we have a bad claims year, the cost of our stop-loss insurance goes up as well.
Have we had any hit stop-loss? Okay.
So, so i- if it goes above eighty thousand, we do get reimbursements from our insurance.
Okay, and we'll see those
Yes.
in here as well?
Yes, those, those have been recorded in here, so we just, um, pharmacy some of it and just some other things. So we do expect the pharmacy, we hope that the pharmacy change will save us several hundred thousand dollars over the new year. So we will, we've already been talking about doing our budgeting for that a little bit earlier, obviously, by the time you get to renewal in November, we've already adopted a budget, there's not a lot of time to make those changes, but we're, we're looking forward, uh, to next year already, and have already had some meetings to try to talk about how we can continue to manage those claims a little bit better.
Thank you.
So, uh, Commerce Lexington, um, the regional competitiveness plan. Uh, we'll let Devin answer if you have any specific questions about this, but the city did participate in phase one of this, and this is kind of just that regional marketing uh, that we do, and if you have any other questions, feel free to ask, and I'll let Devin explain, but those of you that were here before, or mayor, you can.
I think this is where the twenty-five thousand, there's three components of this, you know, we're giving twenty-five thousand, Scott, fiscal court is giving twenty-five thousand, and then Scott United is getting ten. It's based on the dollar amount of, of dollar per, uh, population, so about sixty thousand dollars. So our investment part is twenty-five thousand.
Right, and this is one of the topics where that, uh, work session that the county kind of let us, let us piggyback on, and that's recorded and available on their YouTube page for anybody who couldn't make it, because I know it was during a workday. Um, but this regional competitiveness plan, it, it works with the nine-county Bluegrass Alliance region. Um, and we did, the, the city participated in phase one of that, and some of the, the bulk of the presentation at that meeting was the deliverables from phase one, and then what phase two looks to bring. Um, so if you all have any questions, we do have that printed material as well, I know we sent it out before that presentation, but if you have pointed questions between now and adoption of the budget amendment, or just in general about the regional competitiveness plan and kind of what the goals are. Um, like, like it says in the amendment, uh, Commerce Lex is spearheading that, but the expectation is that all the partner in counties contribute a dollar per citizen, just kind of that, that buy-in based on population. So, um, like the mayor said, the city and county have evenly participated at that twenty-five thousand, and Scott United has, has chipped in the additional ten thousand to, to show that business community support of the program.
The next item, uh, one of the new things we did with this council was offer the, either the cell phone stipend, uh, because obviously you're using potentially, uh, personal phones for city work, or we offered you the option of a city cellphone. We did not have a cellphone line item in the city council budget, we just had travel and training, so we're adding a cellphone line item, uh, for six months. Building inspection had some technology needs, uh, some network switches that are coming due for replacement, and we have revamped the city work software, and they're in the process of doing training and an upgrade to that software to make it more usable. That was one of the budget reductions, reductions we were able to do, is typically that contract was about seventy-seven thousand a year. We had that annual contract down to sixteen thousand a year to pare it down, but they're getting some training to make it most effective and most useful for them. So the training in that, uh, was part that we had not, excuse me, planned for in this budget. Uh, police salaries, and you'll see this in both police and fire. Typically, when we budget, obviously, we budget salaries one hundred percent for positions that are in the ordinance that council has approved. And we budget our overtime, uh, using the projections that, you know, the departments have put in, and depending on vacancies, typically, in the past, we've expected, you know, vacancies in salaries have covered most of the overtime. This year has been a lot, so we are requesting for the police department to get through the end of the year, I think it's about an additional twenty-eight thousand dollars in overtime, and I'll go ahead and for fire department, right now, we're showing that we should be able to move from salaries to overtime and be awash to get through the end of the year. So that is one of those items that typically we do address in the mid-year budget amendment, going back up to police. Many years ago, five, six years ago, we developed a plan talking about staffing in the city. The original goal was to add five police officers per year. I believe we did it the first year, but we've not been able to do it every year since. Um, this year, we did add three new officers in the original budget and told them to come back and request at the middle, mid-year. So, uh, there is a memo regarding their staffing in your packet, and after discussing with, uh, the mayor, he's put that in as a recommendation. So what you see there is salaries and benefits for two new officers essentially from April to June to cover the last three months of the year. Vehicle maintenance and motor fuel, those are also two accounts that we do our best to estimate during the budget, but, um, police, I've, I've talked with Captain Lodel, there's been a lot going on, unexpected maintenance on some things, delay of getting some of their, uh, fiscal, their twenty-twenty-five models delivered, so hopefully as those new models get delivered, um, they, they have to go and get all the graphics and upfitting. So sometimes the timing, if they get backlog, we don't get them as quickly, they have to continue to maintain the vehicles they have. And, uh, so that is something they've requested, and then motor fuel. The camera system is a new request, this is something they used during their interview process, and, uh, it has not been functioning properly, so they have a request for that. The twenty-eight thousand six sixty-seven is a quote that covers five years of software and maintenance on the cameras that are used in their interview rooms. Coming back down to fire, again, you see vehicle maintenance there. We've heard a lot about that at the end of November and December with their fleet, the aging fleet. Um, you pretty much can't take a, a fire truck to the shop for less than five thousand dollars. So we've had some delays on when those new trucks are coming in, hopefully. The one that was just approved by council in December, we hope will be here by summer, and then the other two that were ordered custom previously should be here. I think next spring to summer. So we do have three new ones in the pipe that are coming, but they are not here yet. The first due software for fire, that is an annual subscription fee. You will see a reduction, uh, after this in the, in future years in the nine-one-one budget. We have our Tyler Technologies CAD computer-aided dispatch software that has always had a fire record suite. Uh, in consultation with the county and talking to them, the fire department fills, uh, for their fire records, this first due software provides what they need for that, plus then some. So that will in future years be pulled out of the Tyler Tech contract once so. This needs to be done in conjunction with our cloud migration, as we're migrating our computer-aided dispatch software from a server to the cloud. Uh, if this budget amendment's approved and council approves, then the fire department will take their records and move it into this software. And then going in, uh, future, we won't have that cost on the Tyler. So it's just a re, just distribution of the expense. The fire department, when we added the fire inspector in the budget, once that got approved, they do need a new vehicle, that was an added position. So that is three months, assuming that we can get a new vehicle in their hands by May, that's covering three months of a new vehicle lease. Uh, uniform carryover, they had, uh, an invoice of some things that were ordered near the end of the year that didn't arrive till after, so that was one of the things we missed in the carryover budget ordinance. Public Works, um, they do have, with the snow removal, they've exceeded, they need some additional overtime, so we've requested an additional twenty thousand there. Uh, the flashing lights for schools, that's a special project. Eddie, I can't remember, which was it, which schools was it?
It's at Dorf in the rear, the rear of the garden, in that quarter.
Southern.
Southern, okay. So there were some flashing lights that were requested to be installed, uh, at those schools on city streets. So that was a special project that came up after the budget was adopted. Uh, the transfer to stormwater and cemetery, we'll talk about those expenses more, but again, just a reminder that stormwater, as you'll see, is funded a hundred percent by the general fund. So we do transfers to that fund, which cover those expenses, and the cemetery, of course, is split fifty-fifty with the county, so anything that they request, we end up splitting fifty percent, so that's what those are. If you'll flip over, any questions about the general fund? Before I move in, obviously, the bulk of it is in the general fund, and then again, like I said, I didn't go through the previously approved transactions in detail, but those were things that were previously approved and discussed by council. The business park fund, a few previously approved transactions for phase three there. Uh, we recently had a request from Jack Connor to let us know that part of the phase three expansion does include a sewer privilege fee and a hydraulic sewer modeling fees. These, these are outside of the three million dollar KPDI budget. Uh, for the city's half, it will be funded from one or two pots of money. We do still have phase one land sales in the business park that we have a balance that we can use to fund this. And then the county half, uh, Devin and Emily are looking at clarification on that in a local agreement. We, to see if we're able to use phase two land sales on phase three expansions, to see if that's allowed. If it's not allowed, then we'll be billing the county for their half, uh, since they are partnering with us on that phase three expansion project. But no general fund money will be needed to cover that, we do have it in our previous land sales. The nine-one-one budget dispatch has its own fund because we have, collect a service fee for that. It is also an interlocal, so the county funds half of any expected increases here, and they had some additional technology needs. They did not participate in the budget with firewalls and switches and some non-console computers. So you have the console computers that the dispatchers sit at, but you have additional computers for the administrative staff, the CAD administrator, et cetera, that they have requested. The grant fund, this is just bringing in any grants that the city has accepted since mid-year. So those, uh, local, state, and federal grant revenue, and of course, the biggest of those being the TAC grant. The ARPA fund, this is just kind of cleaning up what council approved at the end of the year. Our ARPA funds that were received in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, uh, we had to contractually obligate those by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. The previous council took all the actions necessary to do so. However, we had some budgeted line items before, we had money left over in stormwater accounts. Um, we had some money left over in a land project that didn't get done, so the, to make sure those were contractually obligated by December thirty-first, the previous council redirected some of those funds to parks and rec projects, um, which freed up a little bit of general fund money for some other things we had to do. So this is just cleaning that up to reflect the action that the previous council took. The environmental services fund, Eddie's department, stormwater had contracted for a stormwater work plan for the Indian Hills subdivision. What that is, is we hired an engineering firm to basically come up with a plan with specific work orders that public works will eventually implement. And it'll take, I think, anywhere from one to three years, I think Eddie talked about, there's a lot of projects in that area. So this provides, uh, funds for whether it be equipment, rental, supplies, et cetera, for public works to then execute those task orders that come out of this plan. The cemetery fund, you'll see. The cemetery fund, you'll see, they're requesting, it's about twenty-one, twenty-two thousand of expenses. You will see an eight thousand dollar in and out between professional services and salary and benefits. That is from, they still had a vacancy, therefore, they were still using their temp help. Once that vacancy, I believe they have hired or are very close to hiring that person, that will eliminate the temporary help. They've also asked for additional funding for landscaping, maintenance, other equipment, just to get through the budget year. And then they have requested HVAC in their garage. They use propane heat right now, so it may take about five years, but we would recoup the cost of what we use for propane. And also, it would provide cooling, because right now, there is no cooling in the building, and they use propane heat. We already talked about the medical self insurance fund. That was shown as a transfer from the general fund. And lastly, capital projects is just cleaning up. The biggest one here is the TAP grant match. When we accepted those funds, that required a twenty percent match of eight hundred and thirty-six thousand. And then some of the adjustments to the architectural contract that the previous Council approved for City Hall, and then showing the one change order that GMWSS agreed to fund for the water, water fillers on the, water bottle fillers on the water fountains. And then, of course, you have the ordinance, the legally required with strike throughs and lines. Any other questions about the budget amendment?
When we're talking about all of these things that are contingent on federal grants that are
Yes.
still on hold, how is that reflected here? When you say that previously approved transactions for the TAP grant and
Yes.
some water things.
For, I know for the TAP grant specifically, we have not even gone out for engineering or anything like that. So this is just matching the budget up with what was approved by previous Council action, but I don't know.
So this could be drastically different in thirty days based on what the federal government decides about the hold.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. And I think every program like that is keeping close tabs, and I know certainly Karen's keeping close tabs on any action there. But ultimately, you know, that, that TAP money, it's all included in the budget, but the Council will still have to approve an engineering contract.
Right.
Will still have to approve, there are a lot of different checkpoints along the way. So ultimately, depending on where that, where that process is in the federal government level, by the time an engineering contract comes to you, you have the opportunity to say, we're comfortable approving this right now, or we're not comfortable approving it right now. Not that, not that it's ever a good thing that things move slowly, but to that point, we just now got a draft agreement for that project. So, you know, the Council's accepted the funds per our process, but the approval of the agreement that the mayor will need to sign still hasn't happened. So there are still a lot of checkpoints along the way for the Council to keep a pulse on that and decide comfort levels to do the project, because ultimately, you know, you don't ever want to turn away grant funding, but you also, in this case, need to decide whether you're awarding contracts that you're going to be obligated to pay.
Yeah, it could cost our general fund a lot more money if these federal grants are not allowed to go through.
Right.
So we'll have a lot of decisions to make based on what.
Lots of checkpoints along the way, and we'll continue to keep, keep tabs on that and make sure that, you know, as you all are asked to approve contracts, there's a clear answer of how it will be funded or what obligation there is for the city's general fund.
I just wanted to see what was reflected here, is just what we've approved.
Yes, it is. And of course, again, like she said, no actual expenses will be paid from this until, obviously, Council approves contracts. We don't have any approved contracts right now for that. Most of our federal grants that we have ongoing activity on are some personnel, some of our VAWA and VOCA, and they don't fully fund the personnel anyway, but that's most of what ours are. Any other questions regarding the budget amendment?
All right.
First read?
First reading.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Summary, prior year revenues are increased by three million, three hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. Tax and permit revenues are increased by eight hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. Branch house fee revenue has increased by eighty-two thousand, twenty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. Fines and forfeits to revenue has increased by six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. Intergovernmental revenues are increased by three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Other revenues are increased by five hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. General government expenses are increased by six hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. City council expenses are increased by one thousand and eighty dollars. Building inspection expenses are increased by seven thousand, three hundred dollars. Public police expenses are increased by eight hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. Fire expenses are increased by one million, three hundred and forty thousand, six dollars and thirty cents. Public work expenses are increased by twenty thousand dollars. City engineer expenses are increased by fifteen thousand dollars. Interlocal expenses are reduced by eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. Transfers to other funds are increased by one million, fifty thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. Capital expenses are increased by one million, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Business park fund, prior year revenues are increased by eighty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-three cents. Intergovernmental revenues are increased by ninety-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-three cents. Transfer from other funds are increased by one, one hundred thousand dollars. Capital expenses are increased by two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-six cents. Nine-one-one fund, prior year revenues are increased by nineteen thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and five cents. Intergovernmental revenues are increased by nineteen thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and five cents. Dispatch nine-one-one expenses are increased by thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and ten cents. Grant fund, prior year revenues are increased by seventy-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty cents. Local grant revenue has increased by six thousand dollars. Grant, state grant revenue has increased by sixty-five thousand dollars. Federal grant revenue has increased by two million, forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. Affordable housing expenses are increased by ninety-nine thousand, sixty-eight dollars. City engineer expenses are increased by three thousand dollars. Police expenses are increased by seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty cents. Fire expenses are increased by sixty-five thousand dollars. Capital expenses are increased by one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. ARPA fund, federal grant revenue has decreased by five hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Stormwater expenses are decreased by one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Community service expenses are decreased by ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. Interlocal expenses are increased by one hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. Capital expenses are decreased by four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and three cents. Environmental services fund, transfers from other funds are increased by fifteen thousand dollars. Stormwater expenses are increased by fifteen thousand dollars. Cemetery fund, intergovernmental revenue has increased by ten thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. Transfers from other funds are increased by ten thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. Cemetery expenses are increased by twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Medical self insurance fund, transfers from other funds are increased by five hundred thousand dollars. Medical plan expenses are increased by five hundred thousand dollars. Capital projects fund, intergovernmental revenue is increased by two thou, two thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Transfers from other funds are increased by nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. Capital expenses are increased by nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty cents. All ordinances or parts of ordinances that are in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, six twenty-nine North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four, or at www georgetown k y dot gov. Both introduced and reviewed for the first time February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
That's Jace.
Mayor, if you would grant me just a small bit of latitude. Earlier, Councilmember Stone asked you a very important question. Note, it was relevant to the discussion on solid waste. I gave you what I hope was not perceived as a flippant answer, a short answer. I was just saying that I just wanted to point out, that's a very important part of the discussion on a very complex project, and it's more important than what I can or should say from the back row. So I just wanted to clarify.
I'm just looking for a rough estimate.
Understand.
I just wanted, so they would be prepared.
Understand. I think, I, I know what you were going for, but just so we're same page. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, if we could go to our first slide. First new business item, we have three tonight, and our first is a purchase order for Deso Tech in the amount of fifty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. This is purchased for activated carbon, forty thousand pounds for our treatment process at wastewater plant two. Activated carbon, it's used for removal of organic and inorganic material, micro pollutants, heavy metals, VOCs. This carbon, as it, it helps pull things out that we don't want in the water, it allows us to meet our treatment standards for toxicity before we discharge the water, and it helps maintain our biggest part is compliance with our quarterly bio monitoring at the plant, and that's through our, our state permit. This is a budgeted purchase. I always like to go through whether it's budgeted, whether it's not budgeted, how we procure it. This actually is a sole source purchase for this treatment material. We've sampled, and you can get activated carbon in a lot of forms, but we've sampled those, we've tested other products, and they don't work as well in our treatment process. This is something that our quarterly bio monitoring, we can't not be in compliance. So right now, this is a sole source treatment. Again, we've looked for other projects, we did products, we did some testing last year, still haven't found it. So this is what we have for your consideration for plant two tonight.
I need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Ms. Brent. Second made, motion made by Ms. Brent, second made by Mr. Minke. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in motion for Deso Tech for fifty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Item B, said Exum Water Solutions for two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Two hundred and forty-five, seven fifty-four. Yes, sir, thank you. This is for Xylem Water Solutions. It's also at wastewater plant two. It's another treatment material we use, and this is for three hundred and seventy cubic feet of resin, also part of the treatment process. This is a budgeted purchase, and we make it every year, and this is part of the unit price chemical bids that I brought to you. I don't remember if it was last meeting or two meetings ago, but this is another material we have to have in the treatment process to meet our discharge permit. And, and again, it's budgeted, it's something we know we're going to have to replace every year.
Motion made by, okay, motion made by Mr. Hampton, second by Ms. Mitchell. Are there further questions and or comments? All in favor of Exum Water Solution for two hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Item C, duty construction for three hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
This is a final, final item for your consideration. This is our forty-sixth payout on the project, and it gets us to eighty, eighty-six percent work complete, as we've identified with our engineering team and inspector and construction team. We still briefly touched on, we have contractually March thirty-first for this, our big milestone of beneficial usage when we put the plant expansion in service. I will preview that now. We, we will move that date out further into the, into the year as a result of just the contractor will claim some of their contractual inclement weather days that, that they've been delayed. So we're working to finalize that. And when I bring that to you, I hope at the next meeting, I'm going to mention a new date one time and one time only. This isn't going to be a thing that the contractor is allowed to say, we're going to go to this date, well, we, we need some more time. There's some other things that they're trying to work with us, as I've said, related to some of these final wiring, some of the firing, final processes of the plant to get it in service. If you went out there right now, you would not think it's close to being in service, but we're, we're close enough, as I mentioned, I think, at our last meeting, that we've started releasing some availability requests for sewer, so those projects can be working concurrently with us finalizing this, this milestone. So this is their, their payout for work completed in January. As the mayor said, it's, I'm sorry, I lost my page. It's three hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents, and that's for duty construction.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Hambrich.
I'll second.
Second made by Mr. Chris. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion for duty construction for three hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion passed.
Mayor, I have a question.
All right, yes, ma'am.
When this new wastewater treatment plant comes online, now that we're thinking about trying to do the new budget and the things like that, do we anticipate that there'll be any extra personnel needed for that? Or an increase in the amount of chemicals that we will need to be purchasing in the next year, once it comes online? Is it bigger? Does it take different chemicals?
Personnel, no.
Okay.
I'm not anticipating personnel increase. I think that what we are trying to do with our current budget this year, talk to our staff in preparing for startup, and we're working a new process.
Right.
Is they've been going the closest in-service plant to our design is Bowling Green Municipal Utilities. They, they operate a SBR plant, a sequential batch reactor plant like we're building. So our staff have been going down there to train with their staff for a number of months now.
Okay.
And two things that they came back and said, we need a scissor lift and we need a Bobcat. So what, those are, those are not backbreaking expenses. And so what we're trying to do, we have put away money for, we did budget funds for keeping the current plant in service as long as we can. We know that we've still got to, we're trying to minimize what money we put into it, but we did put money there knowing that it's a, it's an old plant, and we've got to probably still make some repairs while we're waiting on the new plant. But we feel like that things like that are where we can find room in our budget to get that new equipment. But we did design this plant that hopefully it will be easier technology to operate and that we won't have to have an expanded headcount there.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Subject to change, of course, but that's, that's the goal.
All right, thank you so much. All right, item thirteen, city attorney, resolution amending regular scheduled police committee meeting times.
So if you recall, earlier this year, you all passed a resolution that set the regular meeting dates for the different council committees. There's been a request to change the meeting time of the police committee, I believe, from nine AM to eight AM, but the day would remain the same. So this is just a resolution changing that meeting time.
Need a motion? So moved. Motion made by Mr. Minke. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Ms. Brent. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion amending the regular scheduled police committee meeting times, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed say likewise. Thank you. City engineer, resolution application for building silent, infrastructure and community grant. So tell us a little bit about that.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. So this is a FEMA grant application. We don't have the grant, we're going after it, or we would like to go after it, to address the downtown flooding that has been a reoccurring problem. And we identified all this, this project in a study that was done about two years ago by the city, where they analyzed the situation, the engineers analyzed the situation impacts, and did an analysis of the, of the area and what it would take to, to address it with piping changes downstream of the flooding areas. And we are able to capture the, the funds that have already been spent to do that initial study, to use as a credit against our grant match of twenty-five percent. And this is a design only, it's not for the, the construction causes, for the design only, to, which is the first step to get this project moving, should you desire to do that.
All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Ms. Mitchell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Hampton. Are there further questions and or comments? Yes, sir.
Just, just a quick question, Eddie. Can you clarify the area? I'm not sure where you're talking about.
Sure. So it starts at Garth Elementary School, that area that the, the city owns that property on the corner. And then the piping that runs from that point, it goes down Rucker Avenue, and then it goes down Ely Avenue, which is the back alley, and it empties into the Royal Springs Channel and Royal Springs Park. So it's that, I, I could show you, the, the best thing to do is to look at the full report. I can get you a copy of that, and it shows maps of, of everything, but that's basically the area.
All right. Whether you know, further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the application for building resistant infrastructure and community grant, signify by saying aye. in community grant, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next, uh, item fifteen, Department Quarterly Financial Update.
Good evening and again, uh, we're presenting this in the format that we've typically done in the past. I did bring a few extra items that I've shared at Finance Committee recently that will flip to the rest of the council, but again, um, we've been receiving feedback. If there's something that would make these reports more valuable to you, please, uh, feel free to share that with the mayor and we will work towards making sure these, uh, reports are valuable to everyone. The first thing that we usually go over at these quarterly financial reports, you have the top kind of five payroll, not payroll, I'm sorry, revenue, uh, categories. The first one being payroll tax collections and with these reports, we show you kind of the last four years plus current of history. The year-to-date comparison share, it shows where we're at year over year or current year compared to that previous year and what percentage of the years total that we collected to that point. So, for the current year, our budget is, as adopted, was eighteen point five million. Uh, as we discussed, if the budget amendment is approved, we will raise that to nineteen point two. The first six months shown, these are collections for tax returns through the period of December. Those taxes are actually collected through the end of January, but I went ahead and updated that. So, this will look a little different than the line item report on the total because I wanted you to see the full six months of returns and, but some of those are collected in January and line item reports through December. So, to date, we've collected fifty percent of our adopted budget and we are one million two hundred and seventy-eight thousand ahead of where we were at this time last year. And then we just kinda break down, it's, it's the same every month now, but in the past, we use this KJRA incentive payments to show you the amount that we're paying now in tax incentives. In the past, that used to fluctuate, but we're in a period now where it's a flat even one point two million per year, uh, divided out over ten months. Uh, so typically in February and March, we don't see any collections or payments on that. Um, any collections on payroll taxes before I move forward? Okay. The next revenue category is net profits. This one's a little tricky. I'll do my best to explain it, especially for the newer council members. Net profits can fluctuate sometimes quite a bit. Typically, in a given year, we would collect anywhere from two and a half to three and a half million in net profits revenue. There may be some years where we get higher estimated payments or higher tax returns, but generally consistently, it is anywhere between two and a half to three and a half, depending on how our local economy's doing. Uh, that is one percent of the net profit on our businesses and on the payroll taxes, it is one percent of the gross salaries on, uh, individuals who work in the city. For net profits, the two things I wanna show, obviously you can see from twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three, again, we're in that three million dollar average range. Last year, we collected about three point three million. You will see a large negative in June and then a large, uh, positive in July of this fiscal year. And what that is, is at our audit at June thirty of twenty-four, any taxpayer who has a credit balance when they file their tax return. So, they filed their tax return, they made too much in estimated payments, they actually have a credit. Uh, a lot of them choose to keep that credit on, on their account at the Revenue Commission until they file the next year return. They might use up that credit. So, what that means, at the end of the year, I have to reduce our revenue by the amount of those credits or overpayments and we push it to the next fiscal year. So, when we get to June thirty of twenty-five, it'll actually be sometime in September, October, when I get the information, I will get a li, uh, amount from the Revenue Commission that says, we have this much in credits and during the fiscal year twenty-five audit, that number may get reduced again. Again, it will depend on timing of when they file the reports, how much tax they owe compared to what they paid. So, this one's a little bit tricky. So, we, we typically budget, this year, we budgeted three million, two hundred and fifty thousand. Obviously with that, those credits, if we are able to recognize all of those credits as true revenue this year, we would collect seven point two million in revenue this year. But that depends on when those returns are filed, if they actually owe the same or more than they paid in estimated taxes. That one's confusing. Feel free to ask me questions about that one. Um, but we just kinda have to, we can't recognize the revenue until it's earned. So, we push it to the next year and then if, at the end of that year, there's credits owed, we push it to the next year and hope, and that's kind of how it goes.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
So, Stacy, the, the amount that's in credit that hasn't been realized yet or officially required to be paid, so where is that money and where is it? Is it in the Revenue Commission or is it in the city and how is it?
We receive the cash.
Okay.
So, as estimated payments are made, we receive the cash, but I essentially have to show it as, uh, we put it in a different account in the audit this year, but it will be showed as a tax refund. It will be shown as a liability on our balance sheet in the June thirty twenty-four audit. So, even though we've collected the cash, the payment has been made to us, we will have a liability on our balance sheet that says, that's not our money yet.
Right.
So.
So, is, so none of that money then is used for the contingency fund or any of?
No. When we're looking at fund balance and all of that, when you look at fund balance as a June thirty twenty-four, that's already been backed out because it's shown as a liability. So, it is taken out of that fund balance and we don't spend it until we earn it. So, it's not added to our fund balance until we earn it.
All right.
Uh, insurance premium tax collections, again, these are collected on a quarterly basis. So, if the quarter ended December thirty-first, they have until January thirty-first to postmark it, which means sometimes it doesn't get into the clerk's office till the first week of February. And so, I went ahead and showed collections through February, I believe, looking at my lines, so that you could see the first two full quarters. So, again, this will be a different revenue number than what your quarterly detailed report shows, 'cause I went ahead and, uh, showed some of the receipts for January and February. So, for the first two quarters, we've collected four point one million. We had budgeted seven point three. Again, the timing of when we do the budget, we don't always have a complete picture. That last quarter of revenue doesn't come in until after the end of the fiscal year, long after we've adopted the budget. Uh, so, this is one that we hopefully will beat the budget again. This is tied to insurance premiums as we have additional properties, as the city grows, as insurance rates go up. Uh, we have, it is currently an eight percent insurance premium tax, uh, which was increased from five percent, uh, several years ago. And you can see that, you can see in fiscal year twenty-one, we collected three point six million. In fiscal year twenty-two, it jumped to six million and that's when that tax rate was changed from five to eight percent. Property tax collections, obviously these are typically due, uh, to pay without penalty by, I believe, December thirty-first. So, we get the bulk of our collections, uh, in December and then we trickle in a little bit throughout the year, but through January, we had collected two point seven million, which is a hundred and three percent of our budget. And we adopt this rate typically around September, October for the current, uh, that current year. So, in September, October, we'll adopt the rate for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six and we'll have discussions about that at that time. The alcoholic beverage regulatory fee, these, I'm sorry, did you have a question on property taxes?
Yeah, yeah. Quick question on property. So, do we know what the collection efficiency is on the property tax?
I think year over year, we've done this before. I would have to go back and find it. It is usually very close to, if not over a hundred percent by the time you get to the delinquents. So, obviously, someone comes in to pay this year's taxes, they may realize they haven't paid the last year or two. Typically, if you look on that on a rolling basis, we're very close to a hundred, sometimes more than that with the penalties and interest, but I don't know the exact percentage. I don't know if you, but we can.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
For the alcoholic beverage regulatory fees, this was a fee the city enacted back around two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen and this is accounted for in its own fund because there are laws that regulate how it can be spent. So, it can only be spent on the regulation, um, enforcement, policing of alcoholic beverage activities. So, we use this, we charge twenty-five percent of the city clerk's salary and benefits for her office to this fund as the ABC Administrator and we also charge the balance of that for police department, uh, regulation of this, because most of their crimes do have some affiliation with alcohol. We're able to use that to offset a lot of our police salary and benefits. The first quarter was three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty and I did go ahead and show what we've collected through the second quarter, but it's incomplete, so there's still some that need to be paid, I believe, at least that, um, sometimes we have some people who pay a little bit late. So, that one should go up. It was a decrease from twenty-three to twenty-four, so I don't know what happened there. I don't know if people are buying it. Lexington, instead of here, we may have had an est, we did have one establishment close, uh, downtown that obviously was there previously, a, a distillery that had closed that we had previously, so that could be some of the reduction. But, again, these are used for very specific purposes. Those are the five main categories we look at. The other pieces of information that I wanted to share during this update, and it'll be out of order in your packet, I apologize. I don't typically go through the line item report, but I wanted to show you, this document is one that came up throughout the fall as we were talking about fund balance and how it would be spent in the future and as we adopted our fund balance policy. Just as a reminder, especially for the new council members, uh, if this budget amendment is adopted, uh, our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five expenditure would be forty-three point three million. In October, council adopted a thirty percent fund balance policy, which means we want to keep thirty percent approximately three months in a rainy day fund. We want to try not to tap into that for capital spending moving. So, that is a thirteen million dollar reservation that council adopted in that policy. Our unaudited fund balance as of June thirty twenty-four is twenty-five point one million and then I show that twenty-five point one million being reduced by the thirty percent reserve and then a few non-spendable fund balances and restricted cash. We have one cash account that's police evidence money that is evidence that they've collected. It doesn't belong to us. We either have to give that back to the, um, person that was involved in that or sometimes the court gives us a little bit. Streetlight deposits, that's money that's held to install streetlights once to, um, subdivisions are finished. And then the eight point five million, that is the budget deficit for fiscal year twenty-five if the budget amendment is approved. I wanted to go ahead and show you what it would look like if that budget amendment that was read previously was approved. So, that shows a true unassigned, available for whatever it may be, project fund balance of two million dollars. So, again, we'll see how we end this fiscal year. Hopefully, we'll add to that if we have, uh, good revenue trends. And I did break that down. We discussed it in the Finance Committee and one thing I've not done previously, of that eight point five million dollar budget deficit, seven point eight million of that is one-time capital expenditures. Uh, and I can break those down in more detail if you'd like, but I did wanna show that, that even though we are showing a budget deficit just for this year, the vast majority of that is capital one-time, not recurring items. So, we're very close to having a balanced operating budget, just operating expenses. A lot of that is one-time. So, as we move forward, this next budget process, we'll just be mindful of what we approve that is one-time capital versus making sure we have enough recurring revenue to cover the recurring expenses, salary, personnel, other operating costs. The next item, just to keep, uh, so everyone knows, it's a topic that comes up, uh, someone had asked to be updated on our current debt balances, so you have a sheet showing that and, uh, the Business Park, uh, variable rate leases will be paid off in May. The Aquatic Center, Suffollet Aquatic Center, variable rate leases will be paid off next year and then we have reached that ten-year point on our two bond issues, which means we're past that magic deadline where if in any future year, we have excess funds and wish to pay down on these bonds, they're now eligible for that. I think we just have to give, I think, a thirty-day notice to the bondholders that we wish to pay some down. Don't necessarily have that available right now, but in the future, if we have excess funds and wish to do that. And last but not least, I gave you an updated version from what was in the packet of our cash and investment balances. So, that is updated through today to show you, again, like I said, we've been able to hold on to that full twenty million, thirty-day. Shorter-term investments have higher interest rates, but it's, it's that balance of you get the sh, the higher interest rate for the shorter term versus you can lock in a slightly lower rate for a longer term. So, our Stockyards Investment Account has a little bit of both. It's, we try to do the longer-term investments with that Stockyards Investment Account, which right now, on average, is around four percent. So, any questions?
A lot of information.
And I know you've got the line item report, which has a lot to chew on, so, um, feel free to email any questions you have to Mayor Jenkins and, uh, I'm sure he'll forward those to me if anybody has any questions, if you don't have them right now, so.
Thank you, Stacy, as always.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Uh, item, I had a question. Okay. Item sixteen, Council Discussion, A, Old Business. I think the special events. We'll talk more about special events.
I would, I would say that you all, like, agree to take that out of Old Business and we'll be able to have it on the future agenda.
Okay.
Since we're handling it further up the agenda.
Okay.
So, if someone would like to make a motion, take that off.
We'll all make that motion. So, motion is made by, uh, Ms. Mitch, Ms. Mitchell to remove this item from the agenda as un-Old Business. Uh, second by Mr. Hampton. Uh, are there further questions and or comments? Not everybody jumping this at one time now. Uh, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. All right. That is taken off. Thank you. Next one, Old Business, solid waste, uh, collection.
Motion to remove that as well.
Motion is made by Mr. Stone to remove it. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second made by Mr. Chris. Are there further questions and or comments?
Comment, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you to Rep. for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. That item two is removed. Uh, item B, New Business. Does anyone have new business to bring to this council at this time? All right. And if no new business, at this time, council comments, item seventeen. Mr. Stone, I'm looking at you, so I'll start with you. Ms. Mitchell?
I'm ready.
Mr. Hampton?
Uh, yeah, very quickly. I know everyone wants to get out of here, so, um, I, as part of the Legislative Breakfast on, uh, Saturday morning, the issue of affordable housing was brought up and, um, I wanted to, you know, talk about this very briefly tonight and then we can talk more fully in it later. But, I would like to start a, I guess, a, a review or, um, go and with planning and zoning of the ordinances and regulations we have in place right now, uh, that may prohibit or may restrict, uh, developers from coming in and offering some affordable housing. More importantly, I, I think we need to define what is affordable housing.
We do.
And I, I would just like to, you know, see, see something on that in, in our, in our zoning regulations and, uh, you know, I don't know where we need to start, but I just wanna throw that out there. Uh, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I'm just writing notes.
Second, second point, as also as part of the Legislative Breakfast on Saturday, um, it was brought up, there is a House Resolution that is going to be introduced, or it has been introduced, that will delay the destruction of the Great Crossing Dam, uh, until, I believe, uh, is it, Kim, was it twenty-sixth or?
I think it's, oh.
Twenty, December twenty-sixth and, uh, they've asked Fish and Wildlife to, to consider, um, you know, the, the cost of, of fixing it and the cost of getting rid of it and just seek more public input, uh, from Georgetown. So, that is out there. It has not been, been passed yet, but, uh, that, that is out there for, for discussion. So, that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Brent?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Hamburg?
Yeah, some of, some went to the Legislative Breakfast and, uh, Mayor and I were at, um, the, um, Ed Davis Davis Park for panel discussion that the mayor was in, and it was really well-done. And also the breakfast for Black History Month, probably the most inspiring Black History Month speaker that I have, have heard, and the music was exemplary. So I encourage everyone to attend going forward. It was a great Saturday. And I, I just want everybody to pat themselves on the back for the good discussion we had on the events ordinance. It wasn't an easy thing to hammer out. Emily worked really hard on it. We were trying to take everybody's input, and when you see these drafts, it's, it's helpful if we get the information in the two weeks leading up to it, but some things are generated organically, and that's why it's good that we're having the discussions that we are. Even though it keeps us later, I think we end up with a better product overall. So, thank you all.
All right. Mr. Minkie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Greg, I'd be happy to work with you on the housing activity, because that's something that, I think we do a really good job, the planning and zoning folks do a great job of processing, and the things that we did tonight with the Jennings property, I think, is a good example of how we're continuing to make, to make it efficient and meet the needs of folks. The, in addition, the second item is, KLC is having their city day and night where several of us will be going and meeting with our legislators to be able to reinforce a number of the items that are being discussed in Frankfurt, that we can capitalize on the conversations we had on Saturday as well, to represent the, the community as well. So glad to participate in that as well. Thank you.
Ms. Sampson?
Nothing, just want to say thanks to Tammy and Willow for working on that, because I like it when the council gets in and digs deep and really tries to work on things like that. And so finally, for Todd and Greg, we're, it's going, it's going, it's going to get done. But that's it, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Next, Mr. Chris.
I've got nothing.
All right. Then if there's no other further business to be conducted, adjourn.